Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Kostic.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Searcy.
Here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I don't believe we have any changes to our current agenda. As I go through the agenda coming up over the next couple of weeks, you are looking at pictures right now of Fabian Cousteau, who is Jack Cousteau's grandson, who wrote a book called The Great White Shark Adventure. We were lucky enough to have him at our library. Our library, as many of you know, has some amazing programs, and this was standing room only for the event the other evening. So we thought we would share some pictures with you of that event. Okay, looking at our agenda moving forward, next week on Wednesday, March 20th, we will have our regular meeting here. We have quite a number of proclamations next week. We have Meet Out Day, which is on March 20th. We have Love Your Local, which is for independent businesses, on March 30th, and Arbor Day Proclamation, and Arbor Day is on April 6th. We'll have presentations. We'll have an update on the library renovations. So these pictures you see here are a good precursor to that conversation. We will also have an update on the Tacoma Junction project from Neighborhood Development Company. It will be the day after the Development Review Committee meets on the 19th, so we wanted to get some report back on how that went. Our voting session next week will be the first reading ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. Tentatively, we have a resolution regarding accessory dwelling units in ZTA 19-01, and tentatively, a resolution providing for appointments of committees. On March 27th, we will not meet. There will be no council meeting. And then on Wednesday, April 3rd, our regular council meeting will be here. The majority of the meeting will be spent on the city manager's proposed 2020 budget, and we'll have a work session on the discussion of the reorganization of the Safe Roadways Committee. Please note that regarding the schedule for our FY 2020 budget, we will be having public hearings on April 10th and Wednesday, April 24th, and there's more information about the budget schedule on the city website. All right. Now we'll move towards our first item this evening, which is the public hearing on the proposed ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. So, oops, that's my... So if there's anyone here who would like to speak to that, you can go right to the podium, and as you do that, I'll just read the cover sheet. The "Plastic Beverage Straws and Stirs Including So-Called Compulsible Products Made of Biologically-Based Polymers Contribute to Litter in the Local Environment and Contribute to Non-Biodegradable Waste Accumulating in Landfills and Oceans." "Straws and Stirs Made of Paper, Wood, and Other Bio-Grated Materials and Reusable Products Provide Environmentally Friendly Alternatives to Disposable Plastic Products." "Our Proposed Ordinance Generally Prohibits Retail Establishments From Providing Customers With Plastic Straws and Stirs for Use With Dine-In or Carry-Out Beverages. However, Some Individuals Require Flexible Plastic Straws to Allow Them to Consume Beverages Because of Physical Conditions." Therefore, The Proposed Ordinance Allows For the Provision of Flexible Plastic Straws Upon Request and Requires That the Establishment Maintain a Stock of Flexible Plastic Straws." So if anyone would like to speak regarding this ordinance, please come to the podium now.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I just want to urge you to pass the ordinance. I know if... I've also been following at the state level, you know, the state is maybe passing a statewide ban on styrofoam food containers, which we already have. But it just shows this is, you know, this issue is moving, trying to get away from plastics, and I think it's a great example for Tacoma Park to do this, and it may help the state to move on it later. You know, plastic straws, paper straws were invented many, many years ago, and they worked just fine. And, you know, the modern invention of the plastic straw, it's a little bit cheaper, but you know, there's really, these work fine, and if anyone really needs one, as you mentioned, they can, they can have one.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm John Accrily. I'm a member of Resident Ward Two. I got into this because my son and his friends wanted to do it, and then it turned out to be a little more work than I think they first imagined. And luckily, there's a committee that's, came up more recently and has been doing a lot of work printing up posters. We've been getting them around to the restaurants, and really had very little pushback. I mean, you know, there's some concern about cost, but it seems that no one's been to the 7-Eleven, the very new 7-Eleven on the corner. But it seems like, you know, even the restaurants know that this time is now, and this is happening, and, and, and they, several have said, well, this is a cost of doing business in Tacoma Park, because we know the residents care about it. So I want to thank Cindy for taking the lead on this, too, and Mayor Stewart, you have something?
Hi.
Hi. Right.
That's all?
Sammy? Well, thank you, Sammy. Thank you very much, and please thank all your friends and everyone else who helped move this forward. All right, Mr. Lovelace, we will get you the microphone. Go ahead, Mr. Lovelace.
Okay, this is Pat Lovelace. I don't think it's on.
Okay, we'll, we'll...
I think it's on down.
Try it now.
Okay, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, and I got a question about the plastic straws. I'm all for it, and I got a suggestion. People with disabilities, people who have, who can't see or something like that, and they need a straw to drink their, their drink, I think that they could, I think, you know, the restaurants should be able to supply them with a, with a paper straw. That's one thing, but what about when they're not in a restaurant? What about when they're at home or at a party? Is there any way that they can give them a paper, people can get them a paper straw? Because we want to participate in this also. And also, another idea is, I hear somewhere that some bars and stuff have stainless steel straws that can be reused over and over again, and I'd like to see if we could get, get one of those, a couple of those for disabled people. And I think because we wouldn't, we, we don't want to be left out of this. We don't want to be a burden to the environment as much as we can avoid it. And I don't think plastic straws are necessary at all, because look what it's doing to the animals, look what it's doing to the environment. You can bury them, and they'll never rot, and they'll never compost. So something that decompose, something that does not decompose is not useful in the long run. And I want to be able to participate in the paper straw issue, and I also want to be able to find a way if we can get paper straws delivered to nursing homes and also hospitals. And if not, maybe they can furnish the patient with a, with a stainless steel straw, because I think, you know, that that's going to be the answer in the long run for the disabled, because, you know, if you go to a bar or you go to a restaurant, you know, they're going to hit you with a paper, with a plastic straw, and if you don't want it, you should be able to get a, pull out of, pull out of your purse your own stainless steel straw or your own paper straw. And I think that was, that's the answer to this. I want to ask how other people feel about this with the disabled and handicapped. Thank you very much. Love it.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none, then we will now move to our update from our youth council.
Hi, Mayor City Council. My name is Elliot Davy, the, from the youth council. I'm the city council liaison. Before I sort of give my planned update, I'd just like to reiterate, sort of along with the public hearing that just happened, the 2017-2018 youth council, we'd like to just reiterate our support for the plastic straw ban. We met several months ago with these two, and we're super excited to see where this goes, and so the youth council is in full support of this bill. Now, in terms of what the youth council has been working on more recently, so we just had, this past Friday, our first, we hosted a documentary screening here in the auditorium of a documentary called The Price of Free, which is about ending child labor in, around the world, but specifically in India. This Saturday, youth, freshman at Blair hosted, in this, in this building, a youth TEDx talk as well, which the youth council was a sponsor of. And additionally, so we were very excited to see how both of those events went this past weekend, and we were really happy with how they turned out. And then just finally, right now, we've, the last few days, we've sent two members of our youth council to the National League of Cities Conference, where they've been participating in various workshops and getting to know other youth councils from across the country. We, this is our second time participating in the National League of Cities Conference, and I think both years, and especially this year, they've been important experiences, and they've brought back a lot of new and interesting ideas to the youth council. So we'd like to thank the city for allowing us to go and have the, have that experience and that access to youth councils around the country. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much, and have a nice rest of your evening.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next, we will move now to our public comments on voting items. We have three voting items, oh, four voting items this evening. The first is our resolution adopting our FY 2020 Green Team priorities. Do we have any public comments on that? Okay. Next, we have a resolution adopting our FY 2020 council priorities. Any public comments on that? Next, we have a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Any public comments on that? Next, we have a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Any public comments on that?
Jackie Moore, Ward Two. This is related to climate change, and this is actually testimony from Dr. Paul Krzyszowski, qualified environmental professional, on the Tacoma Junction development stormwater issues. The city of Tacoma Park has not reviewed stormwater aspects of the current proposal. The city's approval letter and the record is based on the defunct April 2018 plan. The city review of the older plan was incomplete. It did not consider many aspects of the proposal. Neither the plan nor the city's review considered the fact that nearby residents are already experiencing water management problems. Currently, most of the stormwater at the site flows from the city-owned parking lot to Carroll Avenue, where it eventually enters city storm drains. The developer's plan would divert this water to a storm drain on Columbia Avenue. Neither the city nor the developer conducted necessary studies, including geotechnical, hydrogeological, or storm sewer capacity studies. Neither the soils at the construction site nor the soils on the wooded slope have been well-characterized. Clay layers and soil can make water management much more difficult. The limited studies available show clay layers on the site. Stormwater can either run off over the surface or infiltrate the soil to become groundwater. This has implications for both surface drainage management and the ability of subsurface water to enter basements. Neither the city nor the developer has studied groundwater at the site. Neither the city nor the developer has assessed the potential impact of this additional stormwater on the downstream stormwater management system. It is not known if the system has enough capacity or what the potential impacts could be. The proposed stormwater plan is underdesigned, given recent rainfall patterns and the anticipated effects of climate change in the future. The design, operation, and efficacy of the proposed stormwater management system is unclear. The overall efficiency of the proposed green roofs has not been determined. There is no analysis of water-containing sediment that can accumulate in the large excavation proposed for the site. In summary, it's difficult to see how this proposal meets the Maryland State Guidance of Controlling Stormwater to the Maximum Extent Practicable. Based on all this, it is recommended that a refined, comprehensive analysis that, one, include stormwater, groundwater, and construction water, and, two, is based on geotechnical and hydrogeological data be undertaken by an independent, competent authority with complete transparency. This is a summary of a longer report that can be obtained from the Community Vision for Tacoma Park Group. Dr. Krzyszowski also serves on the Committee for the Environment here in Tacoma Park. And then myself, as Jack Wilmore, Ward Two, wanted to add a quote from Theodore Geisel from 1971, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing's going to get better." It's not.
Thank you. Any other public comments on that voting item?
I'm John Accrily, Ward Two. And in addition to being the father of a straw activist, I'm also on the Committee on the Environment, and Committee on the Environment wanted one of us to be here to speak up for the, this declaration on climate emergency. And I just want to say, you know, this, we, we really hope that this is a genuine move by the city and by the council, and it will involve more resources going forward. And I know, you know, that's, there's not a lot of unspent budget, but, but to really, you know, take the climate, climate change seriously, it does involve more resources, and we really look forward to working with the council on figuring out how to do that best to move forward and, and do something about the climate emergency other than just proclaiming that we recognize there is one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I live at the corner of Willow and Valleview, and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. We agree that there is a climate emergency and that this merits action on the part of the city of Tacoma Park. The city should adopt a resolution focusing on acting boldly to institute climate resilience. Then the city should immediately set about applying that bold action agenda. There are two areas where we exercise, where we exercise much autonomy over relevant areas, trees and stormwater. There's no better place to begin demonstrating leadership than on a site that is not only regulated by the city, but also owned by the city. The Junction site should become a pilot in cutting-edge climate resilience. Therefore, stormwater management for the site should meet standards for retention and control that are more stringent, taking into account increased quantity and intensity of rainwater, rainfall in a warmer world. And pre-forest management should aim to retain the maximum CO2-reducing tree cover by mature trees, not disturbing very steep slopes, and maximizing undisturbed forest cover. And taking out a park across the street and prioritizing traffic flow over pedestrians, buses, and cyclists works counter to these laudable goals. Unfortunately, the currently planned actions in both stormwater management and tree protection fall short of current standards, much less setting an example of climate resilience leadership. We call on the council to make sure that your deeds match your words. It's easy to adopt a resolution, but the city should only adopt one if it's ready to practice what it preaches on the land that it controls. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments on that item? Okay, our last voting item this evening is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for architectural services. No comments on that? All right, then we will move to our voting session. The first is a resolution adopting our FY 2020 Green Team priorities. The Green Team, for folks, more explanation there, the city council and the Committee on the Environment meet at least once a year, each year, as the Green Team to review ongoing sustainability efforts and set priorities for the next fiscal year. This year, we met on January 23rd to review and refine priorities, and then we also reviewed the priorities at our retreat on February 5th. I just want to first say thank you to the Committee on the Environment for working on these each year, and I think I'm really excited about the work we're going to be doing together this year. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Dabala, would someone like to second? All right. Councilwoman Kostic, second. Any comments, changes, discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the resolution adopting the FY 2020 Green Team priorities, please say aye. Aye. Any abstain, any opposite, oh. I know. Any opposing? Any abstaining? Nope. All right, moving on. Resolution adopting the FY 2020 council priorities. The council priorities were established based on discussions during the council's annual treat held on January 24th and February 5th, and during two subsequent work sessions held on February 13th and 27th. In general, the priorities represent the strategic direction the council intends to move the city during the remainder of its term. The council will revisit these priorities as it deems necessary to make changes. And so, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was a change that's not in the version that you have.
Okay.
Or two changes from Councilwoman Kostic.
Yeah, I, I sent, do you want me to go through them now, or do you want to move first?
Yep, that'd be great, and then we can just move them all together.
Yes, so I recommended that we add two small sections to this, just to clarify that we were not just adopting the five top priorities, but also adopting the list of priorities that are attached. So the first one is a, an additional whereas clause after the fifth whereas clause that reads, "Whereas the council reviewed and made changes to its 2018 priorities document to reflect updated goals, strategies, and outcomes." And I also would like to add to the last section where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park formally adopts the council priorities," and adding the language "attached hereto and incorporated by reference."
Great. Would someone like to move the resolution as just amended?
So moved.
So moved. Councilwoman Kostic, do you have a second? Councilmember Kovar, any discussion or questions? All those in favor of our FY 2020 council priorities, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? I just want to take a moment. This is a document that really takes a lot of work and a lot of thought, not just by the city council, but also particularly by our deputy city manager, who keeps track of all our changes, big and small. And so I just want to say thank you very much, and this document will be available, is available now on the website, and each year, I'm always curious to see what kind of graphic we'll do on that, so I'm looking forward to that. Already, awesome. All right. Our next item is a resolution declaring a climate emergency. I don't believe we have any changes on that. Would someone like to move our resolution?
For this, it's the, it's the resolution that's in the, in your packet.
In the packet, right. And it, and it has been posted to the city website.
It's been posted, it's the version posted March 12th at 11:55 a.m.
Yep. Great. Councilwoman Dabala moved it. Do I have a second? Councilmember Kovar, any discussions or comments? Councilmember Dabala?
Uh, there was one.
Can you?
Yeah, there was one, there was one change that was proposed, I'm looking at the city manager, because we talked about this about like half an hour ago. There was one change that was proposed that I think didn't make it in, but that we had intended to add, and it was in the line 68 on the list of things that the plan would be working on, was going to include a phrase about, oh, there it is, never mind. Seventy-seven transportation.
Yeah, I thought, I thought everything was in. All right.
Sorry. So the, the two most recent items that were discussed that had been proposed by council members Kostic and Smith are incorporated in this, just double checking.
Great. All right. All those in favor of the resolution declaring a climate emergency, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we got our climate emergency declared. I know, it's a big night. It's going fast, but it's, a lot of work's gone into all of these documents.
And may I say one thing, two things. One is that in the, in this version, compared to what we discussed last week, there's a lot more about stormwater resilience and strengthening our ability to be resilient. And as many of you know, I don't want to just propose a resolution. I didn't want to have that in there unless we had some concrete plan for approaching, for strategizing about this. Yeah, that was, that was what I wanted to point out.
Excellent. All right, we'll move on to our next voting item, which is single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for architectural services. I don't know if the city manager or the deputy city manager just want to give a bit of background on this one?
Okay. All right. Basically, this is, we have had a open-ended services contract with the firm Bignell Watkins Hasser Architects for architectural services related to city facility renovations and space planning. They've been very useful, especially related to green improvements in our buildings. The previous contract for the services expired in December 2018. The, this company had been awarded an architectural services contract with Howard County for similar services, and we can ride that contract to have that better rate, to continue with them in the, in the future. And I believe that this lasts, I'm not sure of the exact time period that this lasts, but it's a several-year period.
All right. Would someone like to move this single reading ordinance? We can move it before, and then we can ask questions, so. Someone want to move it? Councilwoman Searcy, you have a second? Second. Councilwoman Kostic, questions?
Yes, I, I just wanted to, to go over what you just said. So the city has maintained a contract with this firm over the past few years for this similar work.
That's right.
So my first question is, I gather we are satisfied with their work?
Yes, we've been very satisfied with their work, and there's several of the projects that are in process right now, which include the atrium fill-in project and some of the work with the dispatch area for the police department.
So that was going to be my second question. And then my third question was tagging on to a county contract, and Howard County is clearly going to give us some budget savings. But can you give us a sense of the range of costs that we've had in the past few years with this contract? Are we talking $10,000, $100,000, a million?
It's been more in... It's been more in up to $100,000, and we worked with them for the Public Works building and that kind of thing, so differing prices. Sometimes it's a very small $3,000 because we just need to do this one thing, and we want to make sure that the materials are consistent with other good materials that we have. And sometimes if it's a larger thing, it would come before you as a, as a contract.
Is there any review of a contract that gets periodically updated like this at some point that you would recommend every five years, 10 years?
Yeah, we don't do, we, we make sure that it doesn't go more than five years without a review.
Okay.
And we're actually pretty picky about these things, so we do it more often. I'm happy to have Ms. Braithwaite talk with you about their services.
Yeah, that might be useful, so I, rather than if I'm the only one with questions.
No, Councilwoman Kostic has questions too.
I just had a question. I just wanted to understand, this is just, we're entering into a contract with them, we're not necessarily committing funds to a certain project at this time.
Absolutely. Any of the, any committing of funds comes to you.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Do we, yeah, do we have funds committed for this year?
There are some that are, there are some for this year that were outlined in the budget document, but still, when we get to the specifics, we still come back to you so that you're familiar with it.
All right, thank you.
Terrific. Since this is a single reading ordinance, I'll ask the Assistant City Clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Yes.
Great. So, we're a little ahead of the agenda, and so I would ask Councilwoman Kostic to give the legislative update now before public comments.
Sounds good. Yes, so, it's crossover time, so a lot is happening right now, and we don't have a really firm sense of, yet, of what is all moving forward, but we will probably have more of a sense in the next week or so. So I talked briefly with our legislative advocate today and got her updates on a few things. First of all, the bond bill hearing for funds for the library was on Saturday, and thank you to the mayor for testifying in support of that. It sounds like we'll hear back maybe in the next week or so and get a sense of that, how that is looking. For small cell towers, both bills have been marked for a summer study, and so that is a good thing. That means that there isn't any legislation moving forward at this time. And our city ordinance will remain intact, and we can still have the authority to do what we had hoped to do with that. And, and the city is still continuing to work, it's my understanding, on the administrative regulations and looking at options there. Just an update on the Beltway bill, budget language has been added to require funding, or to restrict funding until an environmental impact statement, study has been conducted. And so, at this point, the Senate still needs to adopt similar language to that, but it's looking like that's a very positive thing for stopping, or at least temporarily delaying the Beltway expansion project. And our advocate in Annapolis said she felt like our advocacy on this was helpful in, in showing our support for that. And then finally, I guess I have two more things here. There's a pedestrian safety bill that's moving forward that we had been watching, but we hadn't put in support, testimony, testimony and support for previously, that I think we'll be looking at putting some testimony in to support. It would basically create a fund that would take money when, when someone, when there's an infraction related to pedestrian safety, such as someone driving through a crosswalk when there are pedestrians in it, and take that money and, and put it into a fund so that it could be used for additional pedestrian improvements. So we're looking at providing some testimony in support of that. And then finally, on opportunity zones, there's a bill related to, to opportunity zones that Councilmember Circe has, has been following closely, and Delegate Wilkins has introduced an amendment that would add retail businesses to that, based on the catch that Councilmember Circe found, related to, there not currently being a provision for retail establishments in this bill. So, where, she said she's not yet sure whether the bill is moving forward, but that proposal has been made. And that's it at this time.
Great. And I would just note, when I was in Annapolis, everyone was seeing the praises of Councilwoman Circe for picking that up, that no one in the state of Maryland picked it up, and that includes the chambers. So, you're becoming legendary in Annapolis.
But they need to send us money.
Right. They need to send us money for that, so.
That's a good example of retail politics.
I have one more on the polystyrene bill, so, on, which the city testified, presented testimony on, and that has passed both houses and is going to the governor.
Good. All right, we're, are there any other public comments this evening on other items? Mr. Lovelace?
This is Pat Lovelace again, your official peace delegate. I want to make a couple of announcements coming up. One is tomorrow, the schools will be taking a walkout down to the White, down by the White House to protest gun violence in our city streets and in our schools and around our country. So the kids are going to be leading the way again, and I'm very proud of those kids. So I think we should be aware of that, and if I, and, and let our kids know about that, maybe they'll want to participate too, because it's their heads on the chopping block too, or should I say the shooting block? Because you never know who's going to be next. Another thing is on Saturday, Saturday, we're going to be having a big demonstration on Venezuela, because Venezuela is, is, is going to become, it's becoming a hot point with the US. And we should start thinking about whether, what the, what the problem really is. Again, it's OIL, oil. And we as citizens should start participating in the, in the world around us. Because like I said before, if you work for peace, peace will work for you. You know, we should save our money rather than battling Venezuela. We could use that money, again, to build hygiene stations for the homeless here in Tacoma Park. Is there a way that we could withdraw the amount of money that our government is taking out of our city? To, to, so that we, we pay for our, our own needs first? Human needs, not guns, not violence, not another damn war? Please, we got to do something about it. You know, don't, don't join the de-gas club, join the, join the club that cares. You know, de-gases don't give a... So, don't join that club, join the club that really cares, working for peace. And I know we can do it Saturday at 12 o'clock down in Lafayette Park in DC. We're going to be marching, and then having a demonstration for Venezuela. And again, tomorrow, they're going to be, they're going to be marching for the, schools are going to be having a walkout. So please participate in both of those things if you can. Okay, thanks very much for letting me speak. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
See you down there.
Great. Any other public comments this evening?
So, Jacqueline Morgan, Word Two. Last week, Chief Duvall brought up the issue with a bus stop at New Hampshire and East West Highway, and I went back and forth with him on email. I just want to make it really clear, you don't have to wait around and talk to principals if kids' lives are endangered. All you have to do is call the MCPs depot that services Tacoma Park, they will help you find a new site for that bus stop. Yes, the roads to the neighborhoods are narrow, that's where the transportation depot can come in. Councilmember Dabala emailed me and asked, you know, she was concerned, like, well, you know, it's a state highway, it's their roads, it's like, that's not the only bus stop in Montgomery County Public Schools throughout the entire county that's on a state highway road. So, it can be done. When there was an issue at my school, the principal wasn't involved, the secretary called the transportation depot. Bus stop was moved. If you don't move forward with the evidence that you have to the transportation depot and a kid gets killed, that's on you. I don't have any kids, so I don't have any personal skin in the game, but as a teacher, one of my kids that I formed, that I taught at a previous school who then moved over to Tacoma Middle, she got killed on Piney Branch Road. There's a bench in her memory, and the state came in with the help of Tacoma Park. They did some improvements to that road, nobody, no other children have been killed there yet. So, again, if the stop is really dangerous, take the evidence that the police have, take the evidence that the parents have given you, and whatever bus footage there might be from their cameras or video, and call the transportation depot, get it fixed.
Any other public comments this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go on now to council comments. Any council comments?
Nobody.
Councilmember Kovar?
I didn't want to go first.
You're first. You're first.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be gesticulating. Several things I wanted to mention, thank you. Number one, I want to express my appreciation for the police department. We had five members of the, of the department, four officers and the civilian statistics person, crime information specialist, and at a neighborhood community meeting in Hodges Heights last week on Thursday night, and that's a location where there's been a very high number of car break-ins of late, not car thefts, but car break-ins. Some cases with the cars locked, and some cases with them unlocked. And a couple of things emerged from that, that the police did up their patrols in the area and are working on it. In addition to trying to make sure you always lock your door, what they asked was that, and this has happened to me, and I haven't done it, so I appeal to everybody, if someone rummages through your glove compartment and maybe doesn't take anything, the police still want that to be reported, because that enables them to begin to discern the patterns or trends and potentially, depending on the circumstances, potentially to get fingerprints, so it's very important to do that. And the other thing that, that came up there, and maybe people already knew this, I didn't really know it, I'd heard about it just briefly prior to that, there is some technology by which people can, when they're not in your house, connect somehow to your T-Fob and manipulate that to unlock your car without coming into your house. And so, you can put it in a metal container, but the real thing you have to do apparently is to purchase a Faraday pouch, named after the English person who made advances in electricity and physics back in the day. I've heard they're available on Amazon. Jeff Bezos also owns The Washington Post. And we actually had a descendant of Faraday at the meeting, just by chance it was on Hodges Lane, who said, "It does work." So, I'm probably going to buy one of those. But I, I really want to say I appreciate how much the police did in showing up and actually telling the people that they weren't crazy, that there really had been an uptick in that type of crime there, and they're responding to it. Secondly, just on the cell towers, and I appreciate Councilmember Kostic mentioning that, it's really a good example of how not just us, but the advocacy from a lot of communities can make a difference, and we had submitted testimony in opposition to what I consider to be the really bad telecom industry bill, and we also expressed support for the bill that was backed by the Maryland Municipal League that we're a member of, and that bill, among other things, would have allowed us to keep our ordinance intact, no matter what ended up happening otherwise. And I think having several of them there showed that it was a complex situation, I think helped shunt both of those bills aside for the, for the time being, and we can continue working on it. Hopefully, there'll be process, progress with the lawsuit that we're part of. Just a few other things I wanted to mention really quickly. With respect to the work that we're going to be doing on housing, along with a number of my colleagues, I was at the National League of Cities Conference on and off this weekend. At one of the presentations I went to on housing, one of the speakers presented this statistic, and I think it just illustrates the challenge that we face. In the approximately 3,000 counties in the United States, the question was, how many of those counties, in how many of those counties can a person earning minimum wage afford a decent, you know, decent-conditioned one-bedroom apartment? So that's in 3,000 counties nationwide. And the answer was, there are 22 where that can happen, and it's not really around here. And then you can imagine, in addition, if you have families and so on, how challenging it can be. So, we need to continue working to, to address the affordability here. Two last things, tomorrow, I'm doing office hours, I'll be from 10 to noon at Tacoma Bevco on Laurel Avenue. And then, if people are interested, the mayor mentioned the Cousteau presentation at the library. Here tomorrow night at 7:30 in the We Are Tacoma series, which is part of the, are funded by, by the city, there's a really interesting documentary that's going to be shown called In the Executioner's Shadow. There are materials on it out front, and I happen to know, one of the producers of it, who's an honorary Tacoma Park citizen, Rick Stackers, just a block outside the city boundaries, but he's written extensively on the death penalty, and the movie, I don't think is going to be what people imagine, because they, he looks at three different people or individual families who are involved in, in a variety of ways, and to really delve into it more deeply. So I think it's something worth seeing, 7:30 here tomorrow. I will be here. Thanks.
Great. Councilwoman Circe?
First, I want to thank the housing manager, Grace Wiggins. We spent a lot of time together over the weekend, but we have the joy of attending food delivery at Hampshire Towers, had a chance to meet with a number of the residents there. So it was really a great opportunity to engage residents. We had a raffle, I mean, it was, it was a really good experience, and we're, people were excited to get back over there and, and again, engage with residents again. On Tuesday, I will be attending the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association meeting. I think a couple of my colleagues will be joining me as well, and that is on the 19th, and I will send out the address of the home where we will be. And also, on the 21st, I believe it's Thursday, of next week, will be Coffee with the Cop, and it will be in the Crossroads area at Campion. So look forward to seeing folks there. All right, have a good one.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I have a number of things. I also was at the National League of Cities Conference and really appreciated many of the sessions that I had a chance to attend. Wanted to highlight a couple of things from the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee that I'm on. They are focused on a number of different level, a number of different issues at the federal level and advocating for those, including the opioid crisis, as well as something I had a brief discussion with our chief of police about, which is suicides and PTSD among first responders. And I hadn't realized until having, going to this presentation from Fairfax Police, the level of problem this is nationwide, and the number of people who are suffering, who are first responders, and, you know, deal with the strain of what they see every day and, and have mental health problems as a result of that, and the help that is needed. So I appreciated the support and the focus that our chief of police seems to have on this, and I'm looking forward to working together with him on some, some issues, maybe at the state level that we could advocate on, and then also taking that to a federal level as well. And then, on another topic, I had a chance to attend a couple of really interesting sessions related to transportation. There was one session where people from around the country basically talked about the transportation issues that they have in their, in their cities and towns, and some of the solutions at the federal level that they saw as needed. And I think there's, there's, I know Councilmember Smith is actively involved with this issue with NLC, and may have more to add as well. But I think there's going to be a lot moving forward at the federal level that we can keep an eye on in the coming year or so. As our youth council representative noted, there was a youth TEDx talk here on Friday, or on Friday, on Saturday, of this last week, and I had a chance to attend. I, I just want to give a big shout out to the two organizers, Marusia and Nora, who conceived of this idea and did the hard work to put it together, and then all of the presenters who took the time to put together great speeches to talk about and share their opinions on a, really a wide range of different topics. I really encourage you to take a look at it, it's actually available online on the city TV site and on their Facebook page. If you have a chance, I think it was, it's a great opportunity to kind of hear from young people and the things that they're thinking, and some of the issues that are really important to them. I also wanted to note, we had a meeting last week for the Access for All Committee, which is a committee I chair for the Transportation Planning Board. And... I also wanted to note, we had a meeting last week for the Access for All Committee, which is a committee I chair for the Transportation Planning Board. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things to make residents aware of. There's a Reach a Ride site that the Transportation Planning Board is involved in organizing and the staff manages, that is an opportunity for people to find accessible rides for people with disabilities. And it connects people to accessible transit options throughout the region. So if anyone is interested in that, I'd be happy to give you more information. There's also a program that Womata has called Abilities Ride that is an additional program in addition to Metro Access that can allow people to take taxis instead of Metro Access. So if anyone's interested, I'm happy to share more information on that. And then I also, it's kind of transportation-themed tonight, but I also had a chance to attend the first meeting of the Montgomery County Vision Zero Equity Task Force, which is a task force that the county has put together to look at their Vision Zero program for reducing and eliminating severe pedestrian and vehicle fatalities and severe injuries. And I attended the first meeting of that task force last week, and it was a really interesting opportunity to hear from people around the county talking about different concerns that they have in their neighborhoods and how the county can go about developing a plan that really takes equity into consideration and creates measurable outcomes at the end that we can look at from an equity perspective. So I think it's really important work at the county level, and I also think it's something we, as a city, can potentially benefit from as we look to develop our own programs here as well. And then finally, I am participating in a transit challenge for the week. You can follow me on Twitter, I've been posting pictures all week. I agreed to not drive at all this week, so I've been walking and busing and taking public transportation. And it has been very exhausting at times, but also really interesting. And it's been a useful exercise to document all of it and really think about it, rather than just sort of going through the automatic motions of taking transportation, as you sometimes do. So I encourage you to take a look on Twitter. You can follow me at @CaseyKostic on Twitter, and I'll share a little bit more next week when I'm done with the challenge.
Can I just note that I offered to take Casey in a carpool to the National League of Cities with Councilmember DeValle, and she declined because she was doing this. So this is a real thing.
This is a real thing. And we thank your sons as well. Councilwoman DeValle.
Yeah, hi. I was also at the NLC meeting, and I was on the water and infrastructure track. And since stormwater is on our minds tonight, I was gonna catch up with the Director of Public Works and share some of the materials that I got out of that. But I have four things. The first and most important is that there's a community meeting in our neighborhood next Thursday, 7 o'clock at 600 Elm, which is one of the houses. The topic is the continuing and disturbing activities in the area around Congress Restaurant on New Hampshire Avenue. Everything from noise disturbances on up to assault. And it's been a long-term problem. It has recently accelerated. And efforts that the city police, the city residents, the city council members have taken have not made a significant dent in the problem. So we're gonna get together, police chief will give us an update, the mayor will be there, I'll be there. We'll talk about strategies for moving forward. There's a group of residents who are putting a petition together to seek a hearing, a public hearing for the next county liquor license. And Councilmember Siemens is looking at me, 'cause he may remember this location in a previous incarnation. And one of the things I'll talk about at the meeting is what the city council and city council members have done in previous years on this issue that we could consider doing. So I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar screen as an issue coming up. It's been a long and difficult problem, particularly for the people who live right there, but for all of us. On a more positive note, Ward 2, LED lights are being installed, and I look forward to going home tonight and looking at the new lights. And if I need a shield, because it's shining in my bedroom, I'll call Public Works and get on the list. So anyone in Ward 2, or anybody else in the city who needs a shield because the lighting angles aren't quite right, there's a process for moving ahead, for getting that fixed. Third thing, Chesapeake Bay Policy Council meeting this Friday that I'm chairing. I know some Ward 2 residents are very interested in the topic, which is water, energy, and agriculture, that nexus. And so if you are interested, let me know, and I'll send you the materials from the meeting. Finally, it's movie time in Ward 2. I wasn't gonna mention this, but you started it. So next Tuesday, Tuesday, the 19th, is that Tuesday? Yeah, at the Environmental Film Festival, which is in DC, but there's, all over the city, there's showings of movies. And the film Ground War will make its American debut, and it features the Safe Bro Project and Ward 2 residents. And it'll be, if people want details, get in touch with me, and I'll send you the email, how you can get tickets and where you show up. That's it for me for now. Thank you.
Great. Any other city council comments? All right, let's see, I have a couple of things. Tonight's theme seems to be stormwater, 'cause I wanna thank the head of Public Works for spending probably about over an hour with a group of about 10 4th grade girls talking about stormwater on Friday evening. We had a great time. They really smart, asked wonderful questions, and it was a good evening. Thank you for that. Also talking about 4th graders, we have the four winners from the Mayor's essay contest. They will be at the city offices on March 22nd. So anyone who wants to stop by in the morning or for pizza lunch with the four winners, let me know on March 22nd. In addition, I wanted to let folks know that a group of students, Eleanor Pug, Catherine Gao, and Elizabeth Meek at Eastern Middle School, came in and won a second-place prize for the C-SPAN Student Cam Competition, and it was on 16 and 17-year-old voting. And it's a really great video. No, it was not on stormwater. Next year, we'll do one next year on stormwater. No, it was on 16 and 17-year-old voting, and it's an awesome video. It was really, really well done. They did a terrific job. So you can check that out on the C-SPAN Student Cam Competition. And I think that's it for me. I'm gonna turn over to the city manager.
Thank you. The first item I'd wanna mention is that the, my presentation on a proposed budget is not far away, April 3rd. And so for the next three weeks, the deputy city manager, the finance director, myself, and a number of senior staff are going to be heavily occupied with finalizing our proposed budget numbers and getting all the texts together and the presentations for you. So it may be a little difficult for us to respond as rapidly as we normally do, and I ask your forbearance about that. Quick note, that Montgomery County recently announced that they will be expanding their dockless program to include e-bikes and e-scooters. So there's some information about that. I think they're slowly learning kind of some of the, how these things should be done, but we will find out. Certainly.
Just a moment, colleagues. I'm a little bit concerned about what safety protocols are built into the e-scooters, 'cause I'm, someone who lives actually a block from here was hit by an e-scooter and really very badly injured, although he's okay now. And I think the challenge, of course, is when there are, when bikes and scooters are on the same kinds of trails and so on. And you don't have to answer this now, but I would just be interested if we can find out where that, where the safety piece fits in with scooters.
Certainly. One of the things that our staff, particularly Police Department, but also Public Works and our communications staff have been involved in over the past couple of weeks, I've been working with Washington and Venice Hospital staff on their plans for moving the hospital patients when their new hospital opens. And so there's a lot of coordination related to that. There will be practice runs and a variety of things. The likely date for moving most of the patients that are inpatient in acute care would be Sunday, August 25th. There will be other items, other pieces of the hospital that will stay there, including the rehab beds and a number of other administrative offices, et cetera. So it's not gonna be a complete move. But the logistics of the actual move, the public safety related to that, the communications in advance, so people know what's going on and what to expect and where to go for emergency services, and all of that is being coordinated, and we'll be getting out to you in a very broad way. So I'm just giving you a heads up that we're working on that so that we can be well-prepared and have those messages well in advance. We'd like to take just a few minutes to go over some more Tacoma Junction information, as there have been a number of recent inquiries or comments about aspects of the development review process. I can't address all of the questions that come in, but there's three major ones that I'd like to address this evening. One has to do with the Development Review Committee. Montgomery County's Development Review Committing, or DRC, will be met, will be meeting on March 19th at 9:30 a.m. at the Park and Planning Offices at 8787 Georgia Avenue in Silver Spring. The meeting is open to the public, but there's no opportunity for public comment. The primary purpose of the meeting is for the staff representatives of various agencies to provide technical comments on the plans that are posted on the county's Development Review website, and to indicate if additional technical information is required before an agency can finalize its comments. A city's staff representative also sits on the committee and will share information that is needed, particularly if it affects or is affected by the other agency comments. The city manages the permitting for trees and stormwater. Those processes run concurrently and a bit after the county's process. The DRC does handle forest conservation, but it is not as strict as the city's tree ordinance. It should be noted that the Tacoma Junction project, I know people don't believe this, but it's a relatively small project compared with other ones that are normally reviewed by the DRC. So the time spent on the review and the meeting is likely to be relatively short. I think it's scheduled for about a half an hour. The city's urban forest manager has been reviewing the tree-related materials submitted to date. He and members of the development team met on-site today to review the possible removals, planting sites, and construction impacts to existing trees. The Tree Commission has agreed to meet with NDC representatives on April 15th and will provide comments to the council in time for your May consideration on the resolution regarding the site plan. And I just wanna note that I appreciate the work of the Tree Commission in taking this on. There's been some misunderstanding of the timing of the stormwater review related to Tacoma Junction. A concept plan for stormwater has been approved by the city, but the much more detailed permit application and review is yet to come. When other aspects of the site plan are finalized and the building footprint is set, very specific formulas and calculations are required to be done by the engineer of record to show that the plans meet or exceed the requirements. The process and calculations are defined by state law, and the city cannot weaken or strengthen the rules arbitrarily. The city engineer reviews the application, and if they meet the requirements, they are approved. There is no peer review. This is the same process followed in any jurisdiction in Maryland. And I have information in my comments about, for the Tacoma Junction project as currently proposed, what the calculations would be for the space. The numbers, basically what's proposed so far would be a treatment that's 27% more than required right now. These numbers will be recalculated once the site plan is set, and that information will be part of the stormwater permit application documents that will be submitted. Since there is no stormwater management on the site now, the overall volume of stormwater from the site is expected to be reduced by the new facilities that are required. Part of the permit review process will include an evaluation of downstream stormwater system to ensure that it can handle the stormwater coming to it from the facility. So I just want you to understand, it's going through the regular process. There'll be a lot of information. And we obviously look to the city council's resolution and the upcoming resolution as we have the discussions on all of these aspects of the project.
Can I just ask a quick question about the timing of that?
Sure.
What is the general timing for the stormwater review by the city?
So may I ask Ms. Braithwaite, obviously needs to go get a refined site plan.
Yeah, basically, the concept documents have been submitted and reviewed and approved, and that took place last summer. Typically, we don't see the full permit application process until the site plan issues are resolved, site building footprint is determined, and, you know, basically they've gone through the county review process and the planning board process, in case there's any changes to that. So once all those things are completed, and the building footprint and the building site plan is defined, then they'll resubmit for the stormwater application. So I don't know what to anticipate relative to the DRC and then the Planning Commission, but it would be, you know, sometime later this summer. We would anticipate getting a full permit set. That doesn't mean that we don't talk to them in the meantime. So there's been a lot of communication back and forth as the various issues have been coming up. We've seen various iterations of their plans. Again, the state requirements and the city requirements, our city's stormwater laws, based on the state manual and the requirements included in that, related to the Clean Water Act and the Chesapeake Bay protections. So there's very specific formulas and documents that they have to meet and verify. And once they submit those documents, we review them.
And I think, you know, one of the things we have to recognize is that, you know, when the site plan comes back to you, you may ask for changes, and there may be other things that go through. So it's one of those things that it's too early to do the very complex calculations.
And so where in those processes do members of the public have some opportunity to view the plan and let us know what they think?
They can look at the information, but it's not something that they can weigh in and say that this, they'd like more of something.
Well, they can tell us, right? So, I mean, at what point can they see whatever is being considered?
The materials that we have are available to come in and look at the plans. When we have them.
We received a stormwater, a very detailed stormwater set of comments, and I was hoping that we could ask the Public Works Director to take a look at them, not to put you on the spot now.
They've been forwarded and reviewed. On a final fun note, this is the octagon contest. So those people who are a little bit tired of the octopus on the clock in old Tacoma can weigh in in the octagon contest. If you would like to have an octopus for yourself, you can submit a short essay, 200 words or less, or a video, two minutes or less, explaining why you want the octopus, what you plan to do with it, and what its new name will be. And my understanding is that people have been weighing in. So if you're interested, there's a connection here, and you can go right on in and fill out your application, get your own octopus. That's it.
Councilwoman Kober, do you have another question?
No, sorry.
Okay, no, that's good. All right. We're, did you have anything else? I just wanna note, since we were ahead of our agenda and a couple of members of the public came in, were there any other public comments tonight? Nope? Okay, then. Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry, yeah. I know, we're never early. Go ahead.
I'll try to be brief, I know you're on a schedule. I'm Gene Koo, I'm resident at 315 Lincoln Avenue. And I just wanted briefly speak on behalf of, in support of the efforts to increase the usage of accessory dwelling units. I know it's something you're talking about in your work session today. I think you already have a lot of testimony evidence about how it can improve accessibility to housing, especially for folks of modern income, as well as access to homeownership by folks of modern income, because it helps to pay the mortgage. I did wanna share just one story in our own case of our family and why it matters, not just to folks who intend to be landlords and rent out part of their homes, but for the rest of us, in that we recently bought a different house in Tacoma Park in order to accommodate our multi-generational household. My in-laws now live with us. And in the process of renovating, we ran into trouble with the inspectors because they saw that we were putting in a kitchen, and they automatically assumed, well, there you got an accessory dwelling unit. And in order for you to have that, you've gotta go through all the paperwork of doing an ADU, even though we were one household and living together and not in fact intending to create a rental unit, but they still insisted that they had to treat it as such, simply because it looked like one. So we... So we, I think it would be great to have more accessory dwelling units simply for the amount of diversity as the community, but just a small observation about how it affects even the rest of us who are just trying to live in more diverse types of households that it can really help the rest of us as well. So thank you if you're considering supporting that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Koo. Thank you. So Ms. Lowen, I'll let you speak, but I think you were here earlier when we had public comments, no?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were inviting more public comments.
For people who came in late, but go ahead, if you want to speak.
It's just an announcement, Suzanne Lowen, co-op board member, and it's just a little PSA from the co-op. Starting March 28th, Thurs, what are the, co-op Thursdays will begin from 5:30 to 7:30. There'll be live music and food trucks on the city lot and, and some tabling from organizations, and everybody's invited. And we have a new co-op member corner where you can give feedback and see announcements, and it's right at the front of the store. And what's the other exciting co-op news? There was something else I wanted to share. Oh, website, and we have a new blog, so just check out the, you know, all of the really great new things happening. We have wonderful new general manager, outreach coordinator, and yeah, so, thank you.
And Earth Day.
Earth Day, thank you, yes, that's a big one, yes. Yeah, we'll have speakers and music and food, and it's a big festival and lots of fun, and that is on March, April?
April.
April what? Okay, 21st or 22nd, but check out the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move to our work session, and we have been joined by our Economic Development Manager. Welcome, Ms. Gaines, thank you for coming this evening. I'm just going to turn it right over to you so we can get into it.
Great, thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone, residents and city council. It really is a pleasure to be before you today for the first time as the new Economic Development Manager for the City of Tacoma Park. I have, in my last, I guess, 60-plus days, really gotten to know some of the businesses, and of course, the council members have been an extremely supportive and informative body. I also want to thank you for kind of the report from the front line at the National League of Cities, so receiving the emails and the articles has, it's really been great to, to know that you are an extension also of my knowledge. So I will get right to it. Today, we're going to be discussing the economic development recommendations in our draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. So to start, I really want to focus in on this objective, because economic development can seem to many people like a, just kind of like this big dark monster in the corner that doesn't have any direction and is a threatening kind of harbinger of change. It is not true. Economic development is really about supporting and increasing a thriving community. So, our main objection, excuse me, objective, is the promotion of economic well-being and quality of life. Economic well-being and quality of life, we've tried to address that in several ways here in Tacoma Park. Everything from affordable housing to equity statements and thinking wholly about not just the people, but also the planet. So promotion of economic well-being and quality of life encompasses both of those, and in economic development, we're doing this by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhancing wealth, and providing a stable tax base. So in our recommendations, we really are touching on six major points, of which I'll discuss five today. Increased economic development capacity, business retention and expansion, supporting entrepreneurship, workforce development, business attraction, and then preservation and expansion of housing. Again, economic development, housing, business creation and growth, these are all a part of the same conversation. So starting with increased economic development capacity, the very first recommendation is to develop an economic development unit, so within the city, and obviously, we are well on our way. I'm here, so big checkmark on that. Again, around this development of capacity. Our city does not, or has not had in the past, a lot of capacity around economic development, so it's been really shouldered amongst all of the departments, and I will definitely be here to kind of be that liaison and that central point of contact. The second piece around capacity building is creating a by-county bid along the Tacoma-Langley crossroads and New Hampshire Avenue corridor. This recommendation, I believe, is, it's a little strict. It specifically recommends a by-county bid. I would suggest something-
And that's a business improvement district for those who don't know what that means.
Excuse me, yes, I won't, I won't speak econ developmentese. Yes, it is, it's a business improvement district, and the, I would say that the biggest hiccup is the by-county piece. So we don't have full control over the other jurisdictions, but if we are going to be serious about this, about this area, about this prime opportunity, we really need to think about how we work with the other jurisdictions. So I do recommend a possible amended language around this particular recommendation that talks about building strong collaborative partnerships with our neighboring jurisdictions to leverage our collective strengths for the development of the corridor. So again, it gives us a little bit more opportunity. We already have the Crossroads CDA, the Community Development Authority there. The folks there in that footprint are already being charged fees for those services. We already have something similar. The question is how far we can go with that and how far our neighbors will go with us. So when we're talking about creating a by-county business improvement district, I really do think that the language there needs to be just a little bit more, a little broader, so that we can really be creative. Sometimes best practices are spot-on, and sometimes we need innovation.
I'm just going to interrupt for a second. What we did here is go through the recommendations of the economic development plan, and in that particular case, felt that as you were considering adopting finally this plan coming up, that it'd be language that's broad enough for you to accept. It could incur, it could include exploring a business improvement district in the future, but to, but in terms of making a broader statement so that it can also, we can have some successes otherwise, other ways to reach the same kind of goals if that BID does not work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Is it possible to ask just one question of information?
Sure.
Is a single-county BID possible?
That's actually what we have, essentially. Yeah. So for all intents and purposes, Crossroads, our CDA there operates as such, yeah. And we are in very close contact, you know, monthly meetings, weekly calls, so again, it really is our neighbors we want to make friends with and stay connected and collaborative because we have the same goal in that area. We just really have sometimes differing views on how to get to that goal.
Hi, thank you for that. One thing that I do want to also make note is that with things like, because there was quite a bit of emphasis related to the crossroads in the, in the, in the report that we received and how things like the purple line, now we are facing opportunity zones, might actually create the incentives for collaboration where there may, previously did not exist.
Absolutely.
I will say that I know Councilmember Danny Taveras has done lots of outreach, and we've been working with them. I know that they're working on that Northern Gateway CDC, which Kaylee has been a part of. One thing that I would encourage us to do for this particular recommendation is not just think about the collaboration aspect of the bid, but also whether or not there are other, other aspects of a bid formation that would make sense for us to also consider. Things like tax structures, tax incentives, making sure that they're shared.
Those are definitely, yep.
And that there's synergy on both sides of, particularly, you know, in the crossroads where there's some synergy between what our partners in Prince George's may be doing in comparison to what we may be doing. So I think collaboration and making sure that we're all aware of what's happening is important, but I also think that there are some, some other aspects of the, of the bid process and kind of what it would entail that would be important for us to keep in mind as well. So that there's a targeted plan for the collaboration to ensure that those, those tax structures or maybe different incentives or, you know, one side of the street has the CDA that has fees, that deals with things like, you know, upkeep and trash, that there's something similar perhaps on the other side, and so that there is, it's viewed more as an area and not just one side of the street is one group and the other side of the street is the other.
Absolutely, and I will say that there are some recommendations around incentives that come a little bit further down, I believe around business attraction, but that is exactly what I'm talking about when I say collectively kind of leverage our strengths, because, you know, I received a article just a little while ago, an hour or two ago, from Councilmember Smith regarding the fact that Montgomery County's, you know, job growth is woefully lagging compared to Northern Virginia and DC, and it's Montgomery and Frederick County specifically. So Prince George's County, right across the street, is not having these issues. So the truth is, you know, well, what are they doing well, and how can we, as you're saying, think about how we expand some of the things that work well for us in that area? Yeah. Just to move right along, business retention and expansion, this recommendation is definitely, I think, where the capacity issue comes in. So large-scale outreach campaigns to our business community. I really, we have over 1,100 businesses in Tacoma Park, and we should be touching them at least several times a year. They should not just hear from us if there is a policy or ordinance that they're fearful of. They should hear from us around their celebrated anniversaries. They should hear from us when they have a struggle, for example, they're struggling to balance their cash flow. They are concerned about the purple line, but they have no idea how to prepare for the future or modernize their business. So this business retention and expansion is really, is really about that, reaching and touching all of our businesses, letting them know we're here, we support them, and we really want to see them thrive and grow. They are an integral part of whether or not Tacoma Park is going to be able to thrive and grow. The other is the review of the personal property tax, which is checked off the list, have already reviewed that. I will say that there is, there's a need to balance immediate revenue needs with financial constraints on businesses, growth constraints, the more fees you're paying, the less you're using your money to get new inventory, to upgrade your space, to even have a computer or automated system that helps you save some money. So we definitely need to really have strong considerations about how we balance that request. The third recommendation is around entrepreneurship and small business. This recommendation is kind of the warm and fuzzy of economic development. When people think about entrepreneurship and small businesses, Tacoma Park in particular with our very unique businesses, very local businesses, businesses that literally come from the residents, you know? You can walk into a restaurant here and know that that owner lives here. Their kids go to school with us, you know? This type of feeling and thought is really about, that really is where that small business kind of entrepreneurship piece flourishes. However, some of the challenges are really around spaces to start. So creating spaces to start means everything from traditional, which is very traditional now, but was innovative about 10 years ago, co-working spaces, even places like coffee shops, you know? If you walk into Tacoma Bevco, you see laptops up, you know, for a lot of people, even Councilmember Kovar holding office hours, a lot of people, that is, that's an office space, you know? So when you think about creating spaces to start, there, you want to be broad in your thinking. You also want to look at commercial property in a similar way that you look at housing. So when a small business buys a space, that's a different thing, the same way when a homeowner is buying their home. But most of our small businesses are renters, right? So they are the ones, very much like our renters, they're beholden to their landlords. They're beholden to what the landlord decides, whether or not the landlord decides to upgrade the building, whether or not the landlord decides to increase their rent. So when we think about spaces to start, I want you to consider small business owners and the majority of them here in Tacoma Park as renters. So the protections around rent stabilization, you understand that. When there are, there are not the opportunities for things like rent stabilization for commercial property, there is kind of an affordability conversation that you can have to buy commercial property. There are ways that cities can subsidize and help their small business, businesses become homeowners, home in quotes, if anyone's listening and not seeing my quotes. So entrepreneurship and small business, expanding knowledge of financing options. We really have kind of, in, in our space, we have pretty much one micro loan, the, with OTPA, the Old Town Business Association. So the knowledge of financing options is very limited here, and that is, you know, pretty much the number one reason when businesses start to falter, that they just go away. They, they close their doors, no one knew why, and then the space flips over, and then we refer to a space as the old ice cream shop, the old shoe shop. And a lot of times, that's because of their operations, and the hiccups are always, are often around finances and financing. So expanding knowledge of finance, financing options. And then the last piece around entrepreneurship and small businesses, just really knowing who's here. Who are the businesses along New Hampshire Avenue that are tucked into those little strip malls? Who are they? Who are these people? Who are these families? So familiarizing ourselves with those businesses, again, this has just been a capacity issue. I do plan to establish a workspace in my vehicle, so, so that will be where I am because this familiarization piece is extremely important, and it goes two ways. They don't know who we are. You talk to these business owners, they have no idea, you know, even the structure of the city council. They don't realize how engaged and communicative our city leaders are because they're running a business. It's head-down, keep it moving as much as we can, get the doors open, get the, get the employees paid. So moving forward, really familiarizing not just ourselves with the businesses, but also getting the businesses familiar with the city. Number four and five, five, there are a number of recommendations for number five, so I'm going to touch on number four. In case you're following along in the plan, I've kind of moved these out of order. But workforce development. So increased access to training. Tacoma Park sits- Tacoma Park sits as an island surrounded by resources. Because of our uniqueness, because of our individual character. Because we are taking into consideration things like, you know, environmental protection ordinances, emergencies. Other jurisdictions aren't doing that and they're also not looking at us as friends or allies, et cetera. It's not that they're looking against us, they're just not looking at us, period. So when I think about workforce development, that's exactly what's happening. We have all of these resources around us that don't touch us and are not touching us. So that increased access to training is actually an easier lift, probably the easiest lift that I have. And I'll talk about partnerships in the next few slides. So business attraction. There are about eight or nine recommendations around attracting business to Tacoma Park. Part of the issue of job growth is really the types of businesses we have. So when you have businesses that are small retail-based businesses, they pretty much have flat infrastructures. It's kind of the owners, one or two people. And there's not a lot of promotion, there's not a lot of salary increase. And that also usually looks like a business grows and they hire more of the same type of people. So more of the same salary. You're not always kind of having the opportunity to move into a management level or increased salary level. So when we talk about attracting businesses, we really do have some areas that are prime for it. It is absolutely positively the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. For new businesses, space for redevelopment that will fit new businesses, that can bring the jobs and the salaries that our, that our residents will be prepared for because we'll have tied them to additional workforce training. So infrastructure improvements are, you know, if the government build it, builds it, they will come, that concept. So businesses definitely want to walk into a place where the sidewalks are already there. Where the stormwater management, just to stick with the theme tonight, where the stormwater management is already established, or at least we've already planned for it. You know, we already know what the needs are. So thinking about pedestrian, bike and transit access along that Tacoma Langley crossroads and the New Hampshire Avenue corridor is important. I don't know if you guys have seen, you know, the pictures of moms with strollers that are just out in the middle of the street because there's literally no pedestrian refuge. There, the crosswalks aren't, aren't, aren't where they need to be. We truly need to transform a corridor that was seen as a throughway into the community that we know Tacoma Park to be. Special taxing district, just to your point, Councilwoman Circe. The special taxing district, this is an incentive option. And it really is one of many options for incentives. There are incentives to build, there are incentives to locate. There are things like opportunity zones and their older brother, the enterprise zones. So enterprise zones are really about who you hire. So hiring local Tacoma Park residents gives you tax breaks, et cetera. So when we see special taxing district, I want you to see that as a broader view. And I would even maybe, maybe recommend extending the language around that to just include incentives for, for the type of development or redevelopment that we're looking for. And then the last on this page would be grow the Tacoma Park Housing Reserve Fund. This, this area, I'm talking this metropolitan area of Washington DC, is in dire need, dire need of housing. Our housing stock is old. It's extremely old and tomorrow it will be older. So growing our housing reserve fund is truly about, you know, not making Tacoma Park a keep-out city. We are a welcoming city. We are a city that really does see value in our diversity. So when we have these struggles around development and building multifamily housing, building new housing where there were lots or where there were, you know, businesses that were not productive. This is the area where we can actually expand the goodness that we already have. We have Tacoma Park and all of the wonderful things. I mean, to have students stand up and talk about, you know, voting at sixteen and seventeen years old. We want this, we want our goodness not to just be in this small bubble. We want to extend it as much as we can. So growing that Tacoma Park Housing Reserve Fund is really about giving us a tool that can do that. So we've been fantastic about making sure that's included in the budget. And I'm not here for budget advocacy, but I'm just saying, good job. To wrap up our business attraction recommendations, here's one. And I know this has come up in a couple of the discussions around taxing. Assessing a higher property tax on vacant structures. This is all about getting unproductive areas moving into productivity. Facilitate the creation of a community land trust. Community land trusts are interesting because it is literally the city having, buying, owning land and then subsidizing development. You subsidize the development and then you actually have an opportunity to talk about having affordable housing as a part of that, that goes beyond just kind of a, you're here, so this is what we expect. If you subsidize development, literally, there's less money going out for the developer. Therefore, the negotiation and the points around affordable housing, it's an easier conversation. Similarly, for commercial property. So if we're talking multi-use, mixed use, we're talking community. And as that, that development or as that space turns over, the city retains ownership of that land. So that's something to kind of, and I'll be more than happy to send just best practices, some thoughts around community land trusts because we are very, we're a very small community and we don't have a lot of land trust opportunities. But there are some. Utilize the benefits provided by the enterprise zone to encourage business investment. Again, this is around the incentive piece. And then promote high-density development in targeted areas. So high-density development in targeted areas. High density always makes people nervous. When you say density, you know, folks start to worry about everything from their backyards to their sidewalks, to their parking lots, excuse me, to their parking spaces. So when we talk about targeted areas, I think that's the key word. There are some very strong locations. And again, this business attraction conversation is absolutely about New Hampshire Avenue corridor. So we already have high-density property there. We've got, you know, two of our biggest multifamily or high-density properties house over two hundred fifty units each, you know? And, you know, they have their parking, they also have their community that they're building. You know, I know that the council and the mayor have been very involved there, but that's what we're talking about. So you also want to, I have a little bullet here about density bonus. So planned unit developments that are affordable, that focus on housing affordability, should be given a density bonus. So when we're talking about how we balance, when we're talking about how we balance density, we're not just talking about, you know, million-dollar condos, right? And if we are talking about million-dollar condos, maybe they get the, you know, kind of currently zoned amount. But if we're talking about affordable housing, they can have a percentage greater density depending on, et cetera, their affordability. So there are ways, again, to not just have density, but to manage it for, for the real objectives that Tacoma Park has. And I will say, as I talk about the needs for housing, we do need housing at all levels. So it is not just affordable housing that we need. We absolutely need housing at all levels. And then market the development opportunities along Tacoma Langley Crossroads and New Hampshire Avenue corridor. That's kind of me. In that car with the office space, there'll be a placard across the side. I'll be actively marketing. I've done a bus tour most recently along, along the opportunity zones in, in collaboration with Montgomery County Economic Development. And it's been very interesting to see people's reaction when I say Tacoma Park, Maryland is interested in development. They are shocked, they're surprised when I introduce myself as the Economic Development Manager for Tacoma Park. They are a little surprised. And the next question is, well, where are they interested? And that takes us exactly where we want to go. So we've got some, some work to do around marketing, but we're definitely in conversations, as you know, planning for that. So to conclude, I'm just going to kind of talk about what I've been doing and some of the activities that have actually come in under the recommendation headings. So first, I'm here. So that increased economic development capacity. I started in January, beginning of the month, but I am not new to Tacoma Park, Maryland. I actually was a planner for the district literally right over the line in Ward Four. So I've known Tacoma Park from this side and now I kind of know it from that side. So again, I'm extremely happy to be here. I'm really excited for the opportunities that the community has. Business retention and expansion. So partnership creation for business support services. We are already well underway when it comes to connecting our island to that kind of sea of opportunity and resources. We already have some things lined up. This month, March twenty eighth, we will have our first How to Start a Business in Maryland. Now, this is our entrepreneurship and small business, again, the warm and fuzzy piece of economic development. We're holding in partnership with the Latino Economic Development Corporation, a, a small business training class. How do you start a business in Maryland? How do you figure out the difference between the Tacoma Park regulations, the county requirement for licensing and your landlord, because again, most of our businesses are renters, and your landlord's requirements. So really starting that workshop, again, that's this month, March twenty eighth. It is from six to eight at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. There is a second workshop planned, the very same one, Doing Business, How to Start a Business in Maryland, here at the Community Center, April eighteenth. And we are also going to follow that up with. Oh, four to six. Four to six here, six to eight at the Rec Center. And we are going to follow that up with office hours. So one-on-one conversations with the Business Development Counselor. And that will be April twenty ninth, here at the Community Center. And it also, LEDC, they're really a fantastic partner. I've worked with them for fifteen years. They're extremely knowledgeable and they specifically work with corridor shifting or thing in, in areas like our New Hampshire Avenue corridor. They have a special initiative around the businesses along the purple line. So they are clued in. I sure will. We just had a fantastic flyer completed by our new communication specialist, Donna. So I am very proud to send that one out. That's gorgeous. You should have seen my first draft. So the next piece of that is the strategic business development support. Now, this is really about zeroing in on our job creators here, figuring out who needs help but isn't speaking. This is a triage part of small business development. So when I say strategic, it's not for everyone. The first kind of partnership creation, support, resources, that's more of a broader net. This is really doing the hard work of getting inside of businesses, getting them to trust you and then asking them hard questions. So strategic business development support, I've already started some of those conversations with folks. It's interesting, I did meet with the new business manager at the Co-op, who is fantastic and really interested in working with me. So kudos to Mike for the conversations we've been having. But at the end of that conversation, knowing that they employ about fifty people, I said, so tell me about your operations. You know, how are you guys doing? Are there any needs? Do you need cooperative resource support? Because this is what strategic business retention is about. Large-scale business outreach campaign, this is where I need the council. So we plan to execute a business, a business need survey, similar to the residential survey, just to give you an idea. Much smaller, we're talking seventeen thousand residents versus eleven hundred businesses. And also doing some focus groups. But that business walk is the piece where I need our council. So I want to touch all of the businesses and I want the council to touch as many businesses as possible. I'll be in your email and requesting meetings around the idea of doing a full canvas of the businesses in Tacoma Park. It will take several canvas kind of, you know. We'll, we'll definitely have to do some organizing. I want to bring in more friends. You know, LEDC is great, but we need SBA in here. We need the Small Business Development Centers in here. We even need the utility companies in here. So on all levels, and that includes all of our resources. That's our police department, that's our public works department, it's our recreation department. So the business walk is kind of an all-hands-on-deck, arms wrapped around our business community. And I do expect that to be in the fall, just FYI for planning.
I would suggest Ward Four would be a good place to start. Seriously, because we don't have as many businesses and I think it would give a, a good test run.
I like that idea and I love the idea of a pilot. So you know what? I will take a look at those businesses and out. So Councilmember Siemens already put his request in, so guys, when we go there first, everyone heard it here.
We'll have refreshments, thank you.
And refreshments. But that is, that is a great way to start because a business walk, especially in a city that has not done a lot of that before, does need to kind of pick up momentum. So we may not have as many partners the first time, but the second time. And then the businesses start to talk to each other. We start to tweet about it, we start to market it. So that is really actually a fantastic idea, so thank you for that. And lastly, we're back to this, you know, the warm and fuzzy. This is our business training and counseling support. I just described that. And then workforce development. So I said that this was probably the easiest lift that I have. And it's because, again, the resources are so rich and accessible to our residents. So partnership create connections. The Thomas Edison High School is, oh my gosh, I went there last week for their open house. It's a technology high school that is tremendous. They have a healthcare wing where you literally walk into a room and, you know, there are, you know, hospital beds and the students are in scrubs because they work at rehabilitation centers. They work at, they work at senior homes. These are kind of hands-on career experiences that are open to, are, open to our students. So that's a great opportunity. College living experience, another kind of shout-out to Mike at the Co-op. He connected me with college living experience. And what they do is they, they prepare young adults ages eighteen to twenty. He connected me with College Living Experience, and what they do is they prepare young adults ages eighteen to twenty-nine for college and for career readiness. And these are adults between eighteen to twenty-nine who are on the autism spectrum. So it's really about kind of extending the thought of what college living is really about. The other is, of course, Montgomery College. They are just, they just have a plethora of workforce development programs, education programs. Some of them are three months, and you can literally change your life, and others are, you know, two-year degrees. And then, speaking of two-year degrees, Universities at Shady Grove. So started in two thousand. The Universities at Shady Grove is really a composite of eight Maryland schools, four-year schools. So you can go from Montgomery College, and you can stay within a smaller campus and have other opportunities. It's also almost half the price of traditional school. So again, it's about really giving opportunities and connecting folks to the resources. And lastly is our Success Fair. So our Success Fair is going to be all about workforce development. And we are working with the partners you see here, in addition to a few others. Councilmember Siemens, I'd love to talk to you about the Americor vistas. We've seen a few emails today, and the Americor vistas are some of my favorite people. So I'd love to talk to you about adding them to our Success Fair. So the Success Fair is about, if you think of it, it is an alternative to a college fair, and it's an alternative to a job fair. We're looking for pathways that aren't currently described, for example, college living experience. You know, we want to be able to present, to really present a fair where folks can come and get resources around different ways to be successful in our community and in their lives and community, lives and careers. So that Success Fair is actually being held, I'm working in partnership with our Recreation Department and with the Co-op. So that will be held on the city's lot, and I've been working with Mike and our community engagement person over there to really make this an event that I'd like to really continue annually, just something that folks can look forward to and get some resources around work. It's often that we don't talk about work. Work has a sense of shame to it and judgment. How you work, where you work, how much you make, what your education is, whether or not you have enough. Are you like the other people here? So I want to make sure that our Success Fair is really about being successful on all levels. So just to wrap up our next steps, and I'll turn it over to you, Suzy. At this point, we really need adoption of our Strategic Plan Recommendations. We want to move forward with an implementation plan, a timeline. I think accountability is a good thing. I mean, it definitely makes you sweat a little bit, but I think that's good, too. So as soon as we can adopt the Strategic Plan Recommendations, we can move forward with true implementation and begin to align some of the activities with our budgets. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. And so the, what I'd like to see going forward, we've got a couple minor wording changes for some of the recommendations in the Economic Development Section of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. The council's been going through quite a lot of the details on the housing portion of that. We'd like to schedule a time when we can bring that as a kind of a compilation document with a resolution that would adopt it. And so we can check that one off the list, because we're already doing many of these things, but we need to say where we are and move forward. You know, there will be times to change it. The implementation plan will be also one that changes. But I am urging you to, after you've heard Ms. Cook Gaines' presentation this evening, take a chance to look through this and see if there's some questions that you have, some different kinds of wording things that you have. But see if we can't find a schedule to get it moved forward.
Sorry, I just want to ask a point of clarification on the last thing. Is the recommendation to move the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan at the same time in the same resolution? Or move, since this one, since you're moving, this seems to be moving a bit faster.
Well, we've done a lot of work on the housing one. I can do it either way. It's really kind of up to a scheduling and a preference by the council. But if there's a way to move them both pretty fast, I would, I think that I'd prefer that.
And I would really like to emphasize that housing is a part of economic development. So we don't want to be mismatched kind of on our recommendations. There are some things that will absolutely, you know, Grace and Roz and I are kind of hip to hip in moving the city forward and making it the place that we love, keeping it the place that we love. So that housing piece, I will say, is really important to economic development also.
I just think we were still looking at the indicators, and I think there's a little bit more work that needs to get done on that one before we go to a resolution. Councilmember Smith?
Ms. Gaines, appreciate you being here this evening. And full disclosure, I've known Ms. Gaines for many years, and she ran the Economic Development Office for the District of Columbia. Have you looked at the impact of jobs disappearing in Tacoma Park when the hospital moves?
Yes. So most Tacoma Park residents have jobs outside of Tacoma Park. So many of the jobs were not just our residents. Some of the biggest challenges there is that the service is gone, as well as the customers, if you can imagine, for our businesses, et cetera. I have been working with the city manager, as well as the deputy city manager, to really connect to some of the decision-makers there on what happens next. Because as much as that has been a detraction, there is so much opportunity. That's also one of, I would say, the bright spots when it comes to what can happen next. So, you know, my mom says, one door closes and a window opens. So that's actually how I'm seeing that.
Okay, great. Have you thought about whether or not you think it'd be a good idea for you to attend ICSC and represent the city and look at bringing in more business or, you know, look at opportunities for businesses here?
Yeah, as you know, I'm very familiar with one of those tactics, with that as one tactic for business attraction. But the truth is, I think we have a lot more homegrown than we actually know. I've spoken in two months to businesses that are Tacoma Park businesses that are ready to, that are looking for extra space, you know. We have known for a while that the Co-op, for example, needs some more storage space, you know. We already have a few folks here that are interested in growing and expanding. Again, I want to ask personal questions about numbers and operations, but I think we start there. I think we start there, and I think that that is more of a midterm goal. I'm not going to say longer, but definitely a midterm goal, because as New Hampshire Corridor develops, I do think there's opportunity to bring in perhaps some businesses that provide services on a larger scale.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I'm reading this book called The War on Normal People, and it's about the future of work. It's not a good future. So they're talking about automation and how it's going to destroy what we know about work now. There's going to be a massive disruption. Millions of people are going to be out of work. And then that ties into training people, right? Because there are just not enough jobs to train people, you know.
For those jobs, yeah.
Exactly. And I appreciate you saying that we need to bring more training in, but are we going to be training people for what's going to be the future? And that's what concerns me.
Well, rest assured, everyone is on edge. And when we all are on edge, that's a good thing. So the partners that I've been talking to about workforce development, I've been talking about the future of work. We're not trying to train people for jobs that will not be there when they come out of their training programs. However, some jobs that will stay are like, are things like personal touch jobs, so the healthcare field. Yes, it'll get much more efficient, but it'll get much more efficient. We'll have better machines. We'll have better biomedical equipment. However, at this point, people are not comfortable with, you know, robots doing surgery. Therefore, all the things... It is coming, not as quickly as, you know, driverless vehicles, right? But there is a personal touch piece to our society around the world that I do think, and I've had these conversations literally with the folks that are listed on our workforce partnerships, and they are already adjusting their programs and adjusting their thinking. So rest assured that that's a question that I'm asking when I bring in, when I bring in business training, excuse me, when I bring in workforce training programs. I'll also say there's a need for immediate income. So some of that stuff, like I said, some programs are three months, and you've literally, you literally have an opportunity to change your life in ninety days. You know, so some of that is what we're talking about, some immediacy. But that is closer than we think. The projections are like twenty fifty-three, thirty years from now, you know, losing half the jobs that we know. Yeah, so I understand that.
Okay, great. And then finally, I appreciate what you said about the land bank. But have you thought about something that's similar to like Y Combinator to help these small businesses actually inject money, cash, revenue into their business?
Yes. So I have managed several business incubators. So some of those incubators, and the ones that fit best around the Y Combinator model, the Y Combinator model is really about infusing capital into businesses for quick growth. Those businesses are million-dollar baseline projected businesses. There was a minority incubator that I ran in Manhattan and another one in DC. And the baseline revenue was a million dollars. We're not looking at that here in Tacoma Park. We're talking about smaller retail businesses. I'm not saying we don't have million, million-dollar revenue businesses, but that model doesn't fit right now. That does not mean there aren't people in what I call the cottage small business industry, folks who are working out of their homes right now, who are online, who are kind of these digital nomads. They need to come to the forefront for us to know that we can invest in that way. But part of the small business workshops, things like that, are literally to target people that we don't even know are business owners.
Good, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much for that overview. And just a couple of quick things. This sounds a lot like what we heard on housing, that there are forces going on all around us. We're both trying to hang on to our little piece, but also to make the connection so that we can, we can support and retain. I like the focus on local businesses, supporting and retaining, and that made a lot of sense. I liked the way you talked about landlords and renters as if, again, parallel with housing. That helped me a great deal. The question that I had, going back to that economic development plan that we got, strategy that we got from the consultant, and looking at what you've put here out for us, I'm only hearing a couple of small differences. That's okay, so...
I think it was a great plan. I mean, when I, prior to coming on, I reviewed it, and that, along with the potential on New Hampshire Avenue, was really something that drove me to even be interested. So it is, it's a good plan. It's a good plan, yeah.
Good to know, on a lot of levels. And the one thing that would help me the most is to confirm, again, as we move forward, a lot of this can be done now, some of it's being done already, while we tackle some of these bigger things.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I would be very interested in more information on the community land trust, yeah, community trust for all of us. Because that's a big piece.
Yes, yes, yes.
But I wouldn't want to hold everything else up while we're thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This has been a wonderful presentation, and a number of the things that you've mentioned, I've heard as well. I agree with you wholeheartedly that our first task is to familiarize ourselves with the businesses and have them become more familiar with us. This week, I had an opportunity to attend board meeting for the CDA, the Tacoma Langley CDA, and it became ever more apparent the business owners are not in tune to things like, we're talking about LED lights, or they may not be aware of, you know, some of the things that we're advocating for in terms of like Opportunity Zone resources and the fact that we're having these meetings, and they don't know what it means for them. They barely know who I am, right? So I do think that that's going to be critical step number one, right? Because we need to build those relationships in order to get to the next phase, because we don't have a lot of vacant space, to build a level of trust such that we can ultimately get to more mixed-use development, which would benefit us all. One question I have is about property owners and the outreach to them, which would need to be different than the outreach that we would take to the businesses that are in the space day-to-day. There are a number of property owners who are big names in, you know, regional real estate. So would the plan include a specific tactic for outreach with them? The things that are proposed, like workshops and outreach and, you know, OTBA and knocking on doors, would work really well for the businesses in the storefronts. Probably not so much with the property owners. So I would encourage us to kind of think about a strategy and figuring out a way to engage them more. Kind of bring them to the table, just to start having some of these preliminary discussions, because again, we need the businesses, but we also need the property owners. And to also make sure that they're aware of what the city's priorities are and what may be happening.
And there are some, there are some tactics that do work. Some tactics that are more culturally specific to Tacoma Park would be things like sort of an early morning business, business kind of brunch or breakfast with property owners and the council members, starting with very much like the businesses, because property owners are also businesses, right? So it's an interesting kind of nesting doll situation, and they do have some issues. So building trust first shows that, hey, we actually appreciate you here, and then how can we help you do better? That bleeds down, the same way the negative bleeds down. You know, the more fees they see, the more fees our small businesses see. The more support and help they get, the better lives our small businesses are. So there are some tactics, and I'd love to, you know, kind of brainstorm around which ones fit with Tacoma Park, because we also want them to know who we are, and we are very proud of the uniqueness and the specialness of Tacoma Park. So we want to do those things in that way, too. We want to bring them along, but we also, you know, we want to share our toys, too, yeah.
No, I totally agree. And the last point is about, and we talked a little bit about the bid earlier and the need for collaboration with our partners on the border. But with things like Opportunity Zone, things that are happening at the county level, things that may be happening at the state level, this mad dash that folks are experiencing with trying to understand the laws and what are included and what is required. I think that there may be a need for also carving out a strategy for collaboration amongst key stakeholders that are familiar with the Opportunity Zone designation, funds, how they're set up, who, how do you get one, how do we bring, you know, kind of melding some of these discussions together to kind of get a strategy around how do we, as a city, take advantage of a limited-time designation that we have. And so I could imagine that when we're really thinking through the implementation strategy for this whole recommendation around increasing economic development capacity, the report was written at a time when some of this stuff did not exist. I mean, folks were only preparing for the Purple Line, which could be a great driver. But now we have something else that's, that could really be a game changer. Um, if done, if we are able to devote the resources and the time and, and develop the capacity to nurture and to turn it into something that would really benefit the city. Um, so it would, it would be great that if, with the possible amended language, um, which I agree, doesn't, the bid itself doesn't really capture
Right.
the essence of all of those things. Um, but I definitely want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about all of those holistic pieces. Um, so that when we're developing the implementation plan, it makes sense in kind of what we're doing. And when we're asking for resources,
Yeah.
where we decide to focus as a city.
And that's very helpful, because, um, asking for resources, uh, you know, your voices are louder as the city council than my request to another staff person. So, um, one, I'll say, I am the sole economic development, um, staff person. Um, and with that said, I am absolutely leveraging every level of capacity building I can bring to myself. So, that's, um, the Montgomery County Economic Development Organization. They have and are actively pulling together opportunity zone, um, I wouldn't say collectives or groups just yet. But they do have, um, their eyes kind of fixed on how to figure that out. I'll say, um, that Opportunity Zone Tour, they, uh, they were the organizers of that. So, all I had to do was show up and get on the bus. Um, which is great, because that wasn't our resources, it was all of theirs. And in those conversations, for example, I had a, um, an opportunity fund owner of a major bank say to me, "Well, Tacoma Park, who do I talk to about building affordable housing in Tacoma Park?" I mean, and she came and sought me out at lunch. So, um, you know, from being on the bus and me just pointing things out, um, from the bus and, you know, she was excited about that. So, there are some, um, you know, the engines are moving collaboratively. We just need to make sure we stay plugged in and we need to make sure that we let folks know that we want to be a part of the conversation.
Could I just piggyback on the opportunity zone? Um, cause as you know, when I was at NLC this week, I kept sending you emails.
Reporting from the front line.
And, um, so I, I agree with everything that was just said and would like to add that, um, I think we also need some time to, um, plan and think about what vision we have for the opportunities on here. And so that's why I'd like to sort of just, uh, co-sign onto what, uh, Councilwoman Searsie said, that calling that out. Because I agree, hooking on to what the county's doing, what the state's doing is great. But I think the work of really stating what our vision is for our opportunity zone is not something that we have quite done yet. We have pieces of it, um, that have been done in the past and we've been doing a lot of talking. But really thinking about how are we gonna market, how are we gonna talk about us in Tacoma Park, our opportunity zone? Um, and get that out of there, um, I think we should be called out in this.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. One thing that, to keep in mind for folks who are not, um, we're, we're talking about opportunity zone stuff, cause we've been dealing with emails back and forth. But, but the, the, the idea is that, you know, we've talked about the whole tax shelter thing and people can create these funds, right? But the funds have to be tied to a property or development effort, right? So, you can come up with a fund, anyone can kind of get these capital gains and come up with a fund and advertise it. Um, and we have been designated as an area, or the Crossroads Area has been greenlit by the state as an area. Um, but in order to connect the funds to us, we need to identify priority projects. We need to work with our, um, property owners to see who might be interested in having us promote their site as open for opportunity zone financing, or we're open for a fund. Um, and so, that's the, the next step.
That is.
In addition to some of the other things that you've already laid out here about, we need to be able to market what our, um, uh, what our incentives are, like what is the package that we're putting together to kind of draw businesses here? Because if we're also trying to connect the fund to the property, the property owners, and we're talking about doing more housing or mixed use development, which a lot of this space is already zoned to, to hold. Then from there, bring in, bring in others to kind of create those incentives for them to do the things that we as a city find important and kind of help to meet our priorities. So, um, I, I do think that there's that extra thing that we kind of put all of this stuff together to make sure that we're able to take advantage of this designation, which currently is only, what, ten years?
Right.
So, it seems like a long time, but it's not. And we're, we're at middle of, what, year, year one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
And I'll say that Tacoma Park is, um, has a fantastic foundation. Um, all the work that you guys have done around zoning, um, you know, the planning department and Roz and her team have really set a good stage to give us, um, you know, a great place to, to jump from. We're not starting, you know, behind the ball at all, yeah.
Terrific, uh, Councilman, oh, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation tonight and all the work that you've accomplished in such a short period of time since you got here. It's, um, it's exciting to see all this, uh, this work being done, and I thank you. Uh, I'll be real quick, I just, uh, a couple of things on the housing. You had mentioned that we need attention to all of our housing here, we need more housing, but, uh, of course, we're pretty built up, uh, at this point. Um, and you also mentioned the affordable housing and how we have to do more, uh, to preserve our affordable housing and maybe expand it. But I, um, would just like to, uh, mention that, you know, Tacoma Park has historically been, uh, provided a high percentage of the, um, and I would say more than our fair share of affordable housing for Montgomery County. And as you look at, uh, the need for affordable housing and, and try to, to think what we can do, I would ask you to also think what we can do to encourage more affordable housing outside of the city limits, uh, in Montgomery County specifically. Uh, and I think that, again, you know, our, uh, our taxpayers and residents here certainly want to support the affordable housing and, and, uh, we like having the, the diverse community that affordable housing brings. But I think it's also fair for us to try to safeguard the interests of the, uh, of the residents and taxpayers here and try to spend our money, their money as wisely as we can. I think that to some extent that means that, uh, working with the county to, uh, leverage their dollars into more affordable housing is good. Certainly, we want to get some of that money for us, but, uh, but I also think, you know, building more affordable housing in Silver Spring, for example, or, uh, other areas around here, uh, for the county to do that, it relieves the pressure off of Tacoma Park and, uh, off of the people who, who need that affordable housing.
And I would definitely, um, you know, recommend that the council, you know, weigh in on some of the things that they think they've done very well here and share that with, um, the other jurisdictions. Um, because, you know, some of it is that, um, this city council has been very intentional. Um, and sometimes affordable housing is, um, just a word you use as opposed to a policy you execute. Um, just a words you use, but, um, yeah, so, I, I, I hear you, thank you.
Right, and, and like I said, uh, this council needs your assistance, you're from the housing and economic developments.
Absolutely.
We need your help to, uh, you know, help guide us on where we can be effective.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kostick.
That was it, that was one. Uh, I also wanted to, uh, just thank you for the, um, you know, you're reaching out to the bi- local businesses. I think that is a, a great, uh, first step, or one of the many first steps that you're taking. And I think it's very important, I appreciate that, and anything I can do to help you, I will do that.
I will be calling you, I absolutely will be calling you. I think those vistas are gonna be a big help.
Uh, well, and, uh, yeah, they, uh, you know, trying to organize a service day for them. And so, uh, I look forward, I understand that you're already, uh, maybe talking with some people about that, and so, we'll get that together. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to mention, I'm kind of excited about the workforce development that you're talking about. This is an area that I've tried to do some work in Word Four in the past. And, um, have done, uh, you know, some resume writing, uh, things like that. But one thing that, um, that all of us, I think, just kind of ignore when we think about workforce development is, uh, we need to find some good resources for, um, assistance for people with substance abuse, uh, problems. And, um, many people, um, that I've talked with, you know, they, they want to work, they want to get the skills, but they still have some issues that they need to get over first. And, uh, uh, it would be helpful if, uh, if we have some, uh, offerings, not that we necessarily, uh, programs that we're running ourselves, but if we have some good answers for people of, um, of, you know, where they can get the assistance they need to get into shape to actually benefit from the training.
I think that's a good, that's a really good piece there. Um, I really want to make sure this success fair is really, um, not just diverse, but inclusive. So, um, that's a good thinking point, thank you for that, I'm going to actually.
And certainly, it's not everybody, it's not the majority, but there, there is a segment of, of society that needs that assistance.
We are resource rich, so sometimes it's just a matter of reaching into the network and asking the questions. So, thank you for giving me the question.
Sure. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick.
I want to reiterate my thanks, uh, for this presentation and for the work that you've been doing. Um, I also try to keep it relatively quick, I know it's getting late, um, and I also have to walk or take the bus home tonight, so.
And don't offer you a ride.
So, I have two points slash questions that you don't necessarily have to, um, respond to right now, but I wanted to toss out related specifically to the plan itself, um, in terms of structure. And then two sort of more general points. Um, one was that I wondered if, um, I liked the structure with the housing plan, where we looked at some measurable indicators. And I wondered if, if you could look as you're considering this. Um, in, in some cases, I, I don't think it applies, because it's more like, you know, creating a bid or, um, as you put here.
Relationships.
Building relationships, it's, it's not a measurable thing, but there might be some opportunities to try to identify sort of a quantitative figure.
Sure, sure.
So that there's a sense of where we're going, uh, with some of this, I think that could be useful.
And outreach, we can, um, you know, if we have a general idea of eleven hundred businesses, we can say that we want to reach X percentage by, you know, this year or that year. So, there are some, some numbers that are quantifiable that we can work on, yeah.
Great. The other thing, um, related to the plan was, I think it would be useful, as this develops, to look a little, dig a little more deeply into, in the objective, the point regarding enhancing wealth. And I think that's something that maybe needs to be explained a little more and, and, and delved into in terms of what type of wealth, whose wealth, and how it benefits people overall throughout the community and what that means and how the, how the project and the plan will do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and you don't have to have an answer for that now, just something to look at. Um, and then my other two, uh, thoughts were a little bit related to the discussion, um, that Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Searsie were having regarding, um, identifying a, um, sort of a brand or, or a, a way forward for, um, what, what we want to see. But I was also wondering about actually, um, sort of creating a brand for the city in terms of bringing customers and, and maybe new businesses here. I know some communities sort of brand themselves as a place to buy antiques or come for entertainment or, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Um, and it might be that it would make more sense to, for it to be divided up by, um, commercial districts. Different, different areas of the city might be for different things. But I think it might be useful to think a little bit about branding Tacoma Park as a place that people come to do a certain type of shopping or, or what it feels like when they come here.
Absolutely, and I do think that things like that will bear out in something like a business needs survey. So, and focus groups, um, so we can think about branding from the viewpoint of the businesses too. How do they see themselves collectively as a community?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a great idea, thank you.
And then the final point was regarding, um, workforce development. And trying to find ways to connect, um, people who need jobs with local businesses. Uh, because I think that the more you can cut down on that transportation part, so that you can just walk a couple of blocks to your job.
Yeah.
You know, that's huge, and, and it really improves your quality of life and your opportunities to continue education as you're working in a job, so that you can continue to, um, move, move up and, and get those promotions and develop your skills. So, um, if there are ways to look at connecting residents who need jobs with businesses that need good employees and create that connection here in Tacoma Park, I think that would be useful.
Absolutely, and that is, um, um, I would say that's more of a midterm goal. We do have, um, I'm in conversations around discovering, uh, job boards in other jurisdictions and what that looks like. Um, who manages it, how much can it be automated? Um, but really, if we could have all of our businesses able to post in one, you know, job location online, um, you know, that would be a great way to advertise that and have businesses and residents connect over that. Um, but again, it's an IT solution, there are some, you know, that's not a, a FY twenty. Um, but, you know, if I find out from, you know, a partner or a friend, a friendly jurisdiction that wants to lend that information, I definitely, that's definitely something that will go through Suzie and Jason about, you know, the feasibility of it, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe more just even relationship building in terms of just getting people, when you know people are going into a program at Montgomery College for something, you know, just getting them to think about, oh, come back to our community and work in this, this business, there's this opportunity for you when you finish this program. Um, that might just be another way to think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some observations and questions, but I saw that look, so I'll try, I'll try. I'll try to make them quick.
I really want to talk about ADUs tonight while I'm still awake.
Right. So, I, I do want to, uh, thank you first for, for the presentation. Um, and it was your first, it was a great one, so we look, we look forward to some more. I will say, I haven't looked myself, I don't know if my colleagues looked that closely at the economic development part of the strategic plan of late, so I feel like I have to turn, you know, turn my attention back to that to look at. I would say I wasn't quite thinking it was as close as just needing one amendment to be ready, but I, I'm not sure I know how I would change it. I think, um, having the kinds of vision and goal statements that we're working on with the housing piece would be helpful. Um, and as, uh, Councilmember, um, Kostick mentioned, some sort of way of, of measuring our success. One of the questions I had, and this also relates to her question about wealth, um, the talk about enhancing wealth and expanding jobs and so on, and facilitating growth. All those are things that I certainly think that we should do, but there's also the potential that that also puts added pressure on affordability, and of course, we're trying to work on that with, when we work on the housing piece of this. But do you have any concerns or are there ways of helping to ensure that, in terms of growth and enhancing wealth and so on, that it's done in a way that's broad or, or wide as opposed to ju- pricing people out of the area by, in terms of the kinds of shopping they can do and so on?
Um, well, what I'll say about, um, that objective, um, it starts with economic well-being and quality of life. So, I see wealth as quality of life. Wealth is not just a monetary dollar sign, um, and again, maybe it's a language difference, but, um, or change or edit in language, but when you think about wealth, a wealthy community is a resource. So, in, even in economic development kind of the world, we don't say low income versus, you know, moderate income. Now, we say, you know, resource rich or resource poor. Because everybody knows what poor looks or feels like, right? So, we really talk about resources when we talk about wealth. Um, communities that don't have parks and trees, you know, that is a, that's a, a debt that, um, that they need to fill, right? Um, so, when we think about the word wealth, we can also, as you said, kind of expand what that means and what it means to Tacoma Park, right? Um, the plan has been around for a while, and as I even mentioned, you know, our, um, the fact that it still is extremely relevant really is a testament, actually, to the work that was done. But the wealth piece, I think, can be, um, understood.
Well, you mentioned trees, and of course, we will have this tree canopy effort underway soon, so that's, that's an important part of it.
And that's wealth, that is wealth, yes.
To what extent, you know, you mentioned that a lot of the businesses aren't that well-connected or engaged with what we're doing. Do you think, um, I'll ask a few questions, you can answer them later, if, if you don't want to get into them all now. Um, is the language barrier a, a big part of that? Is the language barrier a big part of that, do you think, that is preventing some businesses?
I think the needs assessment will bear out. I think we can really ask them the question, and I don't think anyone else can answer them but the businesses. So the needs assessment is imperative.
Well, you mentioned further along the collaboration with the Prince George's County area, if not specifically with the county, and I think that's really important. And I mentioned previously at a different meeting, and I'm not sure if you were here or heard about it, but in Old Town now, through OTBA, they're working and creating a task force with businesses and elected officials on the DC side to try to come up with some common, you know, ways of thinking about that economic area, so that it's not just divided up like that. On the outreach to small businesses, you know, that is a council priority, nurturing and helping the existing businesses. And when we, several of us were up in Rockville not that long ago, and Mark Elrich was there, and there was a question that was asked, and maybe someone from the city asked about that or someone else did, but they said, well, the county small business assistance programs aren't, don't touch Tacoma Park, and I think maybe because we're a municipality as opposed to lose county land. And Mark said, that'll stop under me. So that's just something that we-
That's helpful.
Not under me, under him. So that's something that, you know, we should try to take advantage of.
I will, I will mention, some of that stuff is interesting logistical. They execute a lot of it through their library system, and we have our own library system. So some of those things are just, you know, a hiccup gap that they probably didn't realize was happening, so.
Well, he said it would stop, so we got to hold him to it.
It'll stop. I'm here just in time.
And he's also talked a lot about making the permitting process go quicker, so that's something else that you can probably talk to him about. Just a few other quick things. On the workforce training, and I think Councilmember Seaman's talked about this a little bit, but we're doing these larger community grants now to organizations, perhaps like Man Up and some of the others. And so finding a way to have our grants mesh with this plan strikes me as an important, important thing for us to consider. And then just a couple other points I would mention. Do you think it's important to have, and this is where the housing and economic or business creation part comes together, to maybe come up with some incentives to encourage the local business owners to be able to live here in the city too? I mean, we all talk about that, and I think we consider some of the business owners who literally don't live in Tacoma Park as still being, you know, locally owned kinds of businesses because they're nearby. But does it make sense to try to find a way to incentivize that or incentivize B corporations from forming and things like that? Can we do that with, through this plan?
Well, they practically live here anyway. Because if you have a business, you're there, you know, more than you are, you know, at home most of the time.
Right.
I will say things like, you know, the first-time homebuyer program, that grant program. I think marketing things that we already kind of have to them is a great way to say, we don't just want your business, but we want you to be an even greater part of the community.
Okay. One last thing, and this is the last thing. On the land trust issue that several people mentioned, and, you know, I thought that was a great suggestion, but it seemed to be something, when I saw it in the plan that was originally done for us, it seemed kind of beyond our capacity a little bit with the city our size. And so one of the things I keep talking about all the time is, you know, can we partner with an outside financial institution or NGO or maybe even some other type of entity? And maybe that's the way to do it, but if we just do it on our own, I doubt we could afford very much. So I just, can you talk about that for a minute or two, and then that's my last question?
I will say, I agree. It is a longer term, it's a longer term goal, but there are ways that incentives, for example, you know, higher vacant property tax. Once those taxes aren't paid, what happens, you know? So there are ways to kind of incentivize the movement of property into a land trust. We don't have a lot of that, though, I have to say. We don't have a lot of vacant property, for example. So it is a longer term goal, and there are some elements of community land trust that, as Councilmember Searcy was saying about the bid, maybe there are some pieces, some bid-like activities that we can do. And I think that there are, and again, I'll send around some information around that because perhaps there are some land trust-like activities that would be helpful to consider.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. I just want to acknowledge our former colleague, Councilmember Schultz, who is in the audience, because if not for his very hard work and diligence, you would not be here right now. Quite frankly, it was a lot of work on his behalf. And so, sorry you're sitting down there, Fred, because I know you're dying to be up here. So I'll just have a couple of things. Don't, I'm still talking. Just relax. I'm waiting for everyone else to say their piece. A couple of things on the workforce development. I think I sent you a note about the literacy council in Montgomery County last week. Met with Gabe Martinez Cabrera, who lives in Tacoma Park, actually, and he has a grant, and he needs to find two or three other businesses ASAP to work with on this. And so we should connect with him as a partner of not just, because he has a great program, but again, lives in Tacoma Park, so keeping that theme up. One of the other things, I just want to say, love the idea of the business walks. Sign me up for whatever, whenever you want to do them. As we know, from doing the lunches in the crossroads, I'll just give you a quick example. When we went to Sardi's for the first time, brought people in, talked to their manager there, she admitted they never really thought of themselves as part of Tacoma Park. And since that time, they have come, been part of the street festival and done other things, and have actually started marketing themselves as in Tacoma Park.
Perfect.
So more of that-
It works, right?
It works, it works. It's awesome. Sign me up. The other thing I wanted to just mention is more of an FYI and can loop around with you again, is that Laura Barclay and I met with County Councilmember Sid Katz. He's been tagged by the county executive to really look at the permitting process and how to make it better for small businesses. Laura has collected sort of all these stories of small businesses that have opened in the last couple of years or were doing renovations, and problems they've had with permitting or WSSC. And so that might be of a, more of a midterm goal, as we talked about, but we can get you that information as well, because I think that's one of the things that many of our small businesses, I think every single small business that has opened in the last three years has had huge issues with permitting and WSSC, because all those rules are written for someplace like a new build. They are not written for our type of buildings.
Well, I'll just say two things. When I said utilities, I mean, WSSC can be a part of our business walk. And that is part of kind of that model, as well as the idea that some of those questions can go into a business needs survey to kind of dig out a little more info.
It's a great idea, and get more, as Councilmember Kostick likes her numbers, get something like hard numbers on that. That's terrific. Just two other quick things. One would be convening in the, kind of more the nearer term, the businesses in Tacoma Junction. We've done that over the last couple of years, and I know Councilwoman Kostick, Dibala, and myself have really, you know, as you say, touched those businesses. But as the Tacoma Junction project is moving forward-
Absolutely.
And I know you have already reached out to a number of them, but in the nearer term, it might be good to kind of try and convene that group again, so.
Sure, sure, absolutely, yeah.
And then the final thing, which is kind of a big thing, is thinking about as we move forward with the plan. I think when we had the consultants do this work, we weren't kind of full in on our racial equity work that we were doing, and so I'd like to think about how, as we're moving forward, we can build that into some of the goals and objectives as you're looking at it, so.
Absolutely. And it's very much a natural part of my work, so thank you for bringing it up.
Awesome.
May I mention just one thing?
Yes, you may.
As you're thinking about workforce development and what's needed and what we can do, I would suggest you talk to Denise Jones, who's in Ward, now Ward Five, I was going to say Ward Four. She used to be in Ward Four.
He doesn't want to give her out.
But she, she does some training in that area. She's been helpful in what was Ward Four, now is Ward Five.
The fact that she stayed makes me happy.
Yeah.
But if you can forward me that contact or-
She's actually in the audience, so we'll, we'll connect you. Good afternoon, good evening, Jones.
Perfect. That's, I think, all we have.
Can I say just another?
Yes.
I wanted to also kind of share how happy I am to have Ms. Gaines on board. It's kind of the proof about what one position can do. It was a big lift for the council to approve a new FTE in this area, but already the, it has paid off, I think, in a number of ways. We're going into budget season again, and part of what we're looking at too is how to offset tax increases. And part of that is by having really strong businesses. And so it's a, it's a balance. We need to support our businesses. And I know I have seen recently some kind of attacks on businesses here, or real nervousness about some new businesses. Not every new business is a good business, but I do want people to, like, try to find a good way of having a Tacoma Park welcome, and really trying to, you know, we had a great welcoming event at the 7-Eleven the other day, and it did feel like it was a big Tacoma Park hug. And you know that person then is going to want to service well. And so I just want to put a, put a plug into, a thank you for supporting adding this position, and we certainly had past urging to doing that. I think it will really pay off for the city in a financial way that makes it a healthier place. So thanks very much.
Great. Thank you. You can now, you can take that, you can take that now.
Finally, we get to move to another-
Now ADUs.
She was talking to you, Fred.
Did you eat them all?
So I'm not sure how many of you have seen the presentation that Patty did the other night about, I guess it was just last week, wasn't it? This is really different. But she's a star, and we're going to go over some of those points again. And then there is a draft resolution for you to consider. One of the things that we're trying to kind of fit in with how the county's going through its process on this legislation about accessory dwelling units, so moving a little faster than we might otherwise prefer. But I want to have the time to go over that with you tonight, so that next week we may have a resolution that you're comfortable with. And so I will turn this over to Patty Mallon.
Great. Evening, everyone. Oh, wait, no, you got, you got turned off. Oh, no. All right. Okay, I'm also not going to talk about million-dollar condos. I'm not afraid to say density, I'm going to say it once or twice. So I know some of you were here last week, so I'm going to go through this first part just to make sure we have the definitions down, but we'll spend more time on the actual proposed ZTA. All right. So accessory dwelling units are accessories because they exist on lots zoned for a single family. So we're adding a unit to a single-family lot. That's what makes it an accessory dwelling unit. Most of those in Tacoma Park are attached. They're basement apartments, they're attic apartments. They could also be an addition built on. Those would be the attached accessory dwelling units. There's also detached, that would be your backyard cottage, for instance, right? ADUs have to have a separate entrance, they have to be a completely separate unit, even if they're built into the same house, they have to be locked off. Your basement apartment, the person who lives in the main house is not going to walk in through the apartment or through the basement apartment, or vice versa. They have to have their own kitchen, full kitchen, they have to have a full bathroom. They are a separate entire living unit. A lot of the benefits you've already talked about tonight, one of them, Councilmember Kovar just mentioned, like, we want people to live near where they work, right? So being able to increase density, oh, there's that word, increase density near transit in existing neighborhoods without changing the character of the neighborhood is going to allow your first responders, your schoolteachers, your small business owners, opportunities to live near where they work, right? It creates affordable rental units as these smaller areas, so it helps the people who want to come into the community. It also helps people who want to buy homes in the community, who can't afford homes in the community if they have to shoulder the entire mortgage themselves. Maybe their home is a little bigger than they need right now, they're just getting started, they don't have kids yet, for instance, but they have the space. If the space becomes an accessory dwelling unit that they can rent out, that rental income can supplement how they pay their mortgage, right? So we can get more homeowners, more beginning homeowners in. At the other end, seniors who want to stay in Tacoma Park, this is where their communities are, but they're empty nesters now and their incomes have decreased. The ability to rent out this accessory in their home, this other dwelling unit in their home, may be enough to allow them to afford to stay in the homes where they've been for a lifetime, perhaps. All right, in Tacoma Park, we have a little over 60 licensed, licensed is the key word here, accessory dwelling units, right? Because they are on single-family lots, they have to currently be approved by the county because the county is in charge of the zoning. So the county has to say, okay, your, your lot, your proposal is accepted, you can have this extra dwelling unit on your lot. Once that county approval's done, we take over. So if the homeowner's going to rent out that accessory dwelling unit, they go through our housing department and license that as a rental, the same way someone who would be renting out an entire single-family home or a condo unit, or someone who has a multifamily unit would come to us for a rental license. That's the same process after the approval happens. The existing units are in all wards, much more heavily weighted in wards one, two, and three. I'll show you a map about that in just a second. So they're everywhere, and there's a lot of potential for more of them, if we can make it easier for people to get them. And I want to do that because based on our experience in the housing department, the people who have, the property owners who have these ADUs are really good landlords. And I can, I can tell you that on a couple of different levels. One is, you can have an annual or a biennial license, and whether we give you one or two years is based on your inspection, right? We have, all licensed property gets inspected. If your inspection is great, it shows no health or safety violations, only a couple of cosmetic violations, you're on the two-year plan, right? You don't, we don't inspect for another two years, you don't have to pay fees for another two years, you don't have to renew. But if you have problems, any health and safety problems at all, or more than a handful, more than five cosmetic things, you'd be on the annual program, so we'll keep a closer eye on you, we'll watch you every year. Almost every single one of our licensed ADUs is on a two-year plan. Their owner occupied, people take care of their own property, right? So these are in good shape, they're safe, everything works, they're clean, they are well-maintained. Also, the other end of being a good landlord is, these folks are renewing when they're supposed to, they're paying their licensing fees when they're supposed to, they are attentive. I work three desks away from the landlord, tenant mediator, very few of those phone calls are coming from people living in an ADU, right? Because these people are on site, their owners, the owners are on site, and they care about who's in their home and the condition of their home, right? So these are good folks. We also know, as you all do, there's a bunch of unlicensed ones out there. Those are probably pretty good landlords too, because we do get calls once in a while from people living in those that don't have licenses, but not very many. So this is, this is a good indication of the kind of people who want to have accessory dwelling units in their houses. Okay, what you're looking at now is a map of an approximate plot of the existing licensed ADUs in Tacoma Park. There are a little under 20 in Ward One, there's about a dozen or so in Ward Two, I'm in Ward Three, there's maybe 24 there, only two in Ward Four, and three each in Wards Five and Six. So you see those big swaths of purple there are single-family zoning, right? All of those places are available, right, for the development of ADUs, right? That's a lot of opportunity there. This isn't showing any unlicensed ones. Who knows how many dots would be here if we were shown this? We have no way of knowing because it's sort of complaint-driven. If we hear about a problem, then we know about that unit, otherwise we don't. All right. Here's what's happening with the proposed ZTA, the zoning text amendment. Currently, the reason, one of the reasons there are so few licensed ADUs is currently in our single-family zones, our R60 zones, ADUs have to be 300 feet apart. That's a lot. To give you some perspective, that's a block of Tulip Avenue, for instance, or a block of Poplar near Spring Park, or Ann Street, about a block of Ann Street is about 300 feet. I have a licensed ADU, no one else on my block can have a licensed one without going through the waiver procedure, which could take several months.
Could I just ask a question? So when you look at the map, obviously, many of them are much closer than that, so how does that happen?
There is a waiver procedure. So these are folks who have spent a couple of months and time and effort to get these waivers done through- to get these waivers done through, through hearings, right? And so you have to kind of be excited to do that, because it's a lot of work.
I'm not sure that excited is the right word.
Right, right, right. So what the-
Sorry, just talking about the waiver, does it cost money also to go through the waiver process?
There, there's not, I don't believe there's another fee for the waiver itself. There are permitting fees that are right now four hundred and seventy dollars to be permitted. We can talk about that in a minute, too, because that's, it's a concern. That's a concern to people being able to have ADUs in their homes. The proposed ZTA eliminates that distance requirement, okay? This is a, this is a change in outlook. I think when these, the way these restrictions read are, we don't want to have ADUs, right? The way the ZTA reads is, we see ADUs as a good strategy for creating housing without creating sprawl, right? So I think that's good for Tacoma Park, right? Because our, our, our lots are small, three hundred feet knocks out a lot of potential ADUs.
And just to note, on this chart, the, the comments on proposal good for Tacoma Park, that's staff's recommendation.
Absolutely, yeah, yep. For detached ADUs, the backyard cottages, the way the current, uh, the current zoning reads is you have to have an entire acre. Okay, so that's most of Tacoma Park is not, cannot have this, right? The new, the ZTA proposes that there's not a lot size requirement. So the size of a backyard cottage, for instance, would be governed by any new construction zoning. The setbacks, the height requirements that already exist for any construction that you would do, okay? But you don't have to have an entire acre in order to have one of these.
And the percentage of unbuilt also?
I'm sorry, I, you don't have your, uh-
I'm sorry.
And is there also, you follow the same percentage of property you have to leave unbuilt?
It would be the same zoning as any new construction.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They changed the size requirement from, it has to be less than fifty percent of the gross floor area in the dwelling, and had a limit on it of twelve hundred square feet. Now it's less than five hundred percent of the habitable floor area.
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty percent? Wow, it's late, it's really late. I'm so sorry about that. Yeah, so less than fifty percent. And that means we're not going to count where the furnace is, and the water heater, and those things when we, when we create this. And there's no absolute size limit. So it's based on percentage, not topping out at twelve hundred square feet. One of my personal favorites is the existing regulations basically require three onsite parking spaces. The proposed ZTA says, well, let's eliminate, let's make that only two. And there's a waiver option, like there is for the distance between them, to waive that, the parking requirement. I don't know about all of your neighborhoods, but in my neighborhood, there's maybe three driveways at all on my street. So off, offsite, onsite parking is not a thing that we have. So a proposal here is that in transit-rich areas like Tacoma Park, maybe the ZTA can say there is no parking requirement if you are within a mile of a public transit station, like the Metro, like the Legley Tacoma bus station, like, like those things. Maybe that can, instead of having to go through another month of a waiver process, because, who knows, you're probably going to get it, they usually approve the parking waivers, but it's another month that someone is waiting to do nothing other than check that box, right? It's going to keep the requirement that you can only have one ADU per lot. So you have your single-family home and whatever this addition is, whether it's in your home or a separate unit detached. Currently, the owner has to live in the larger unit, and you can only rent out the smaller unit? This new proposal says that owner can live in either one. You still have to have the owner onsite, owner occupied, but they can choose. So let's say, you know, I'm going to be an empty nester soon. Let's say I want to downsize, and I want to live in my ADU and rent out the larger house. I would be able to do that under this new proposal. I would not be able to do that under, the way things currently stand, right? This has actually come up a couple of times, where we've had people who bought property that has, has a backyard cottage and said, oh, this is great, it's just me. I want to live in the back, rent out the, the main house until, you know, I get married, have a family, whatever, whatever my life changes. And we had to say, sorry. That's, the rule is you can't, you have, you can only rent out the smaller place. So this is a change that I think is actually good for Tacoma Park. So people have a little bit more control over what part of the house they live in. Okay, what stays the same? You hear overcrowding is a fear about ADUs, about bringing extra units into neighborhoods. You cannot have more than two adults living in an ADU. That doesn't change. The last time we talked to as many of the ADU property owners as we could in Tacoma Park, which hasn't been since 2012, almost all of them, seventy-five percent of them only had one person living in their ADU. Twenty-five percent had two. None of them had kids living in their ADUs. They're small, right? There, there's, by definition, they are smaller units. That could change a little bit with, if you can, you know, rent out the larger part, but there are still limits on how many people can live in a space. It's going to keep the separation from the principal dwelling, having the full kitchen, bathroom, that's all the same. An important thing to note is ADUs currently, and in this proposal, cannot be used as short-term rentals, which equals Airbnb, which means renting out for thirty days or less at a time. So it's not going to create a lot of new people coming and going and turning that over all the time, right? It's going to be, in, in Tacoma Park, you have to offer a year's lease to a tenant. The tenant can say, I only want six months, but you have to offer the year's lease. So if this is a regular rental unit, which they are currently, that keeps that turnover down. And you're getting people who want to live in your neighborhood. They want to live in a neighborhood, that's why they're going to choose an ADU. They want to be part of that kind of community. Currently, and in the future, ADUs must be licensed and inspected. And a suggestion that we have on the table here is, if you take away the parking requirements, and if you take away the space requirements, that leaves little else for the county to approve other than the inspection. And still Tacoma Park residents would pay the four hundred and seventy-dollar permitting fee to get on the, you know, to, to go through this approval process at the county and have to wait the couple of months for that to happen. If it's just the inspection, Tacoma Park requires that already as part of our rental housing licensing. And we use county inspectors, and we follow the same code, the same building code, the same health and safety code, all of those things are the same. So one of the things that we have on the table here is, if it's an internal, like a basement apartment, an internal ADU, that doesn't require any setbacks or any kind of monitoring for zoning, perhaps we could consider bringing that into Tacoma Park and trying to eliminate having our residents go to the county if they don't have to check those, those boxes off anymore, right? If it's just the inspection, which we do.
Yeah, and the, the reason for that is, is, one of the, one of the secret reasons for this is that we suspect that there are many ADUs that are unlicensed, that if they didn't have the three-hundred-foot difference and whatever, we could encourage the people to become licensed as, with ADUs. And that also protects both the landlord and the tenant by having the annual or the biannual inspections. Right now, the unlicensed ADUs that are out there, there's, you know, we're not in the buildings, we're not, they're not being registered and checked. And we would like to encourage them to, to get to that point. We think that would be healthier for us, as a community, to have those as, as legal identified units. So if there's some ways to encourage people, look, you don't have to go through all of these steps and pay the money and take the months. We can just go ahead and, and do the, you file the paperwork, we can do the inspection, and you're, you're in, then all of a sudden, we're, you're in the system, and we're able to, to monitor that better. So part of this is, I think that the county, they were also trying to figure out, how do they encourage illegal ADUs to get registered? And so far, I don't think they have a incentive. But we were looking at what, what might be some incentives that we could help with.
Other jurisdictions, I'm sorry, have, have waived fees, have waived permitting fees. We don't have those permitting fees, it's not, they're not ours to waive. But this would be a way to kind of work around that.
So I have a question, because, so at the draft right now, that the county council's looking at, the ZTA, there's nothing in there about grandfathering in some of the folks who may be illegal ADUs now?
There was a lot of conversation about this will help them, you know, want to become licensed, but there's, there's no enticement. There's nothing in there about grandfathering them in, or giving them any, any other enticements.
But if we had what you're suggesting here in this bottom box, we, we could do that.
It would, it would save them money.
Yeah, so-
And, yeah.
So we could do some outreach, or-
Right.
We would have more control over reaching out to those folks and kind of bringing them in.
That's right, yes, absolutely.
How would it save them money?
It's like four hundred and seventy bucks.
They would have to go through the county.
They wouldn't have to go through the county.
But then they would be licensed, and they'd have to pay the license fee to Tacoma Park. But, you know, part, I mean, yes, there's that. I think some folks want to be licensed, but they know that they're, you know, they don't meet the qualifications right now because of the, either the three off-street, off-street parking spaces, or the three-hundred-foot distant requirement. And, you know, we've got, like, huge areas of Ward Two with no driveways. I mean, there's, there's whole areas of folks that would have to go through extra steps to have an illegal ADU.
And so I just want to make sure that I understand. So we're talking about the possibility of the city of Tacoma Park, for those ADUs that are within the unit, being able to basically self-license, right? So you don't have to go through the county, you can come to us, we do our own inspection process, we would loop you into that. That wouldn't have any bearings on those folks who want to build those ADUs that are those separate ADUs.
That's right, they don't have to go through a separate-
Those people would still have to go through the county.
Yes.
And so could funds, like, through the housing fund? Could we set up kind of incentive programs to try to promote the, you know, the development, like, creating the ADUs by basically saying, if, you'll get a rebate on your county fees, and we use the housing fund for that? Is that something-
I think we can be very creative about it. You know, I think it's, it's, we have to identify if we've got any parameters around that. But certainly, you know, ADUs is listed in the, in the draft housing strategic plan is something that, that is a way to help, you know, something we should promote.
I guess I just, again, to piggyback on what Councilmember Searsie said, because in the report that was linked to in the cover sheet of the racial equity toolkit from Seattle on accessory dwelling units. So there were two things that I thought were really interesting. One goes to sort of like the idea of exploring areas of helping people to finance ADUs or do other things, or doing incentives so that if people wanted to rent to, say, you know, have some affordable housing and have lower rents, that there were some incentives to build in. Can we, do we need to request in the ZTA any, anything else for Tacoma Park to be able to do that?
No. I mean, if there's, if, if we're just talking about essentially legal units, and we want to come up with incentives for legal units, there's not, there's, that's, that's certainly within our parameters. That's within our authority. The, you know, we couldn't do something that changes the zoning, or, you know, those, those other kinds of requirements. But for the, for something that otherwise meets the requirements, and we want to do some incentives.
Right, so we want to incentivize people renting to, you know, first responders, police officers, school teachers, things like that.
There could be some kind of discount, there could be some kind of facilitation.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because there are so many great ideas out there.
Yes, some jurisdictions provide plans for backyard cottages that have already, you know, that, that fit a certain size lot, for instance, that people can just kind of get off the shelf. There's all kinds of things you could do to help people build these.
Great.
How does this work with existing cottages, of which there are many, in Tacoma Park?
So if they're unlicensed, they would have to go through the licensing process. There is, in the ZTA, if the structure was built legally, but at a time where setbacks may have been different, for instance, those are grandfathered in. So those, the current setbacks wouldn't apply to someone who built something in their backyard a certain number of years ago when setbacks were different. They could still have that approved, provided they fit all the other requirements as an ADU, the way the ZTA is currently written.
And, and a subset of that is that when unification happened, those properties that are on the, that were on the Prince George's County side, if the building was there, it was defined to be legal. So it didn't have to even meet the Prince George's County setbacks. That was too, people felt that that was too much of a burden to try to figure out what was the original Prince George's County setbacks when that thing was built. So they, part of the unification law was that the buildings were defined to be legal. So for, if, if there's, I know of several kind of backyard cottages-
Oh, on my block, there are several.
That came, that came in-
Yeah.
Through, you know, before ninety-seven, those are defined to be legal. So, so then, in a case like that, you would have to go through the inspection, make sure there's the stove and the bathtub and all the other stuff?
Yeah, I, I think with detached, we probably would still have to go through the county just to be sure about those external zoning issues. But it would be, but, but those, those zoning setbacks wouldn't apply. But yes, at that point, it would be the internal things, the full bathroom. The things in there are up to code, everything functions, the ceilings are the right height, all of that.
Cool, all right, sorry, I, like, completely departed from the list. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for this, I think this is really important. Hopefully, it will add more housing. Do you have any estimates, if we, if the ZTA goes forward, how many additional ADUs will come online in the city?
I don't know, because we don't know how many there are. So there will be a subset of, of people who have ADUs currently that are unlicensed that, as, as City Manager said, will say, okay, now these barriers are gone, I want to get licensed. There will be people who will choose not to, and we won't know about them unless they're, it's complaint-driven. I do know that a lot of the homes in Tacoma Park spent some time as duplexes, or were otherwise carved up into smaller apartments. So the conversion into the main house in an ADU would be less onerous than if someone was constructing one out of a house that hadn't happened before. You know, in the eighties, a lot of the houses were converted back from multiple units to single units. It wouldn't be all that hard to undo that.
Except that we had to pay to take all that stuff out.
Right. I'm not sure everyone actually did.
But we don't, we don't know, we don't have an idea. I mean, I think that's something, we would have to see what comes out. Councilmember Smith.
Another question I have is, will the ADUs be subjected to rent stabilization?
They are not currently, right now, single-family homes and accessory apartments are not subject to rent stabilization.
Do you have a recommendation, if they, if we see some type of, like, major uptake, ten percent, twenty percent, that, that's something that the council should look at?
I think it's something that you could certainly look at. Anecdotally, I, I think that rents being charged currently in ADUs are about market or a little less than market. I don't think anyone's looking at this as a way to get rich. Again, this is people, this is my house, I want to take care of my house. I'm not trying to, to gouge people. So I don't think that rents are going to be out of whack right now. But again, because they're not rent stabilized, we don't know what people charge, just like we don't survey our, the people who rent out their single-family homes right now. We don't know necessarily what they charge.
Right, the rent stabilization law just is for somebody that owns two or more units that they rent out.
So if, could I build a prefab house, right, like a tiny house, under this new ZTA? And have it installed in my backyard? Would that meet all these requirements?
Not if it's on wheels. Some tiny houses are on wheels. It has to have a foundation, has to be a permanent structure.
Okay, and it has to be connected to the utilities?
It has to be connected to utilities, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
A foundation or just fixed to the ground?
Well, that's a good question. I think fixed to the ground, it's got to be permanent, it's got to be not mobile.
So on the size limits, with the one acre required for the detached ADU, there's no size requirement there, and then it says no absolute size requirement for the others. I mean, could it be like, you know, Harry Potter size? How do we avoid, you know, exploiting, exploiting people in some way like that?
Code actually exists about how large bedrooms have to be.
Right.
And how high ceilings have to be. So there are, there are building codes for, for residences right now. They'd have to follow those.
And, and it has to be fifty percent of the habitable area of the house.
Or less, yeah.
So given that most Tacoma houses aren't the size of houses in Potomac, that puts a limit on it right there. One of my questions, just jumping back in, had to do with ways to encourage these units to be affordable to the kinds of people that we'd like to, to have them avail, you know, the, the single person, the millennials, the, et cetera. How to keep them affordable, and you had some, the mayor had some suggestions, and I'd like to explore that. But the upper limit in size is just a reality of the buildings we have here.
Right, right, absolutely.
So I agree with the mayor, if we can find ways to incentivize, for example, renters or income people, or first responders, great idea, but I've been wanting to do that for a while. Couple other questions. So on a freestanding structure- So on a freestanding structure that's already there and it could be like right against the lot line, but it's only used as a, currently as a shed or a writing room or a garage, that could now, someone could live, you know, one foot next to someone else's property?
They could if it had the plumbing, if it had the full kitchen and the full bathroom. So if it's somebody's studio or garage or shed, it probably doesn't have those things now. So if, if their homeowners are willing to put the investment in, technically, technically it could.
But it also, if it doesn't, if it was built not according to the variance, to, I mean, to the setback requirements, then they would have to get a variance, I'm assuming.
If, if it was built at a time wherein the setbacks were different, if it was legally built and conformed to the setbacks and the zoning at the time.
Right, but if it, but if it didn't?
No, but if it did, but it wasn't for a living, then a lot of people are going to think that's too close for people to live. I mean, that sounds extremely, I mean, that sounds controversial.
It probably will be. I also don't see a lot of that happening.
Yeah. Can I ask you a couple of things? So in historic district now, would there be an extra layer of approval for the County Historic Commission? For someone, say, to build a, what Councilmember Smith was talking about, a tiny house that was, I don't know, visible from the street? Which seems to be the thing that they, so is that an added layer that they would have to go through?
So certainly like homeowner associations can impose other requirements for how things look if there are historic district requirements.
You have to, you have to comply with historic district requirements.
Okay, so just a few other things. So on the inspections, you were describing a situation where we would do that potentially. The city would, would conduct the inspections for the ones that didn't involve new construction or, and so on. Do we have the capacity to do that?
Currently, we contract with the county inspectors. And they do our licensing inspections for us. So this would be expanding that role, probably. We could talk about doing that differently, but right now, they are the same inspectors. They would do it just as part of our licensing program as opposed to the approval program and then the licensing program.
Okay, and so you, it says in here that you can only have up to two adults. Obviously, there could be children. Is there a requirement that children have, that there be a certain number of bedrooms for the size of a family?
There are square footage requirements that exist now in county code. I think it's, it's 70 square feet for a bedroom that sleeps more than one person, for instance. So it would have to accommodate current county code.
Okay, and two other things. For the, the unli, the existing unlicensed ones that we're hoping are going to come out of the shadows now, were we saying that we might just sort of say, okay, that's fine? Or that the county would say, you did it before, but now you're getting your chance to come, come clean, kind of? Is that, is that the approach that we're thinking about?
Well, currently, the way we, the way things work when we find an unlicensed property is we send them a notice and we give them a couple of weeks to get licensed. If they don't do that, then we move on to violations and citations. So it would be kind of the same thing. You know, they would come forward, there's that initial time where we're not going to cite them anyway. It would, it would be kind of folded into how we do things right now.
So one last thing, I did get a message from Council, County Councilmember Reamer, and I didn't actually speak to him and I called him back, but in his message, he said he was making some changes and I thought he said it might have to do with the size and parking. So we should double check if he's making some changes, just, just mention that. On parking, I do have some concerns because, you know, some areas do have driveways, some areas have parking on both sides of the streets, some only have parking on one side of the street. I think requiring three seems wildly excessive, but I, for me personally, I'm not, I don't think I'm at the point where I would say there should be none. And maybe it could depend on whether there was a driveway or, or some of these other kinds of factors or whether there was parking on both sides of the street, et cetera. So I personally wouldn't be prepared to go as far as the, the check mark that, that staff made without having a better understanding of this.
On the parking, can I just get a clarification?
Yeah, that's my last, my last thing.
This is, this is part of it, is it two new spaces in addition to the spaces that are already, if you have a driveway?
The, the ZTA is proposing two total?
Two total.
On, onsite, so driveway spaces, right. And again, they usually approve waivers, it just adds the extra time.
I mean, two may be more than we need, but, but I don't think zero works, in my opinion. Or it might work in some areas and not in others.
I actually want to, want to echo some of those concerns. I mean, I think what is currently proposed is kind of focusing that radius around public tran, or some of these stations, right? One thing that's very clear with the purple line is there is no planned parking lots whatsoever. And we don't know what the impact will be for parking within the neighborhoods that, that border this transit station. We don't know just yet. And we're already dealing with a number of parking issues in a number of the residential streets just because of some of the commercial spillover and things like that. So, and also we don't know how many unlicensed ADUs that are already in existence, right? And there's a lot of limitations in terms of people, what people are able to build in terms of driveways. So while I support the ADUP, I, I support it, I, I think it's great. I think we definitely need to come up with ways to eliminate barriers to entry for folks. I am concerned that kind of taking this blanket approach of you're next to some sort of metro or transit and therefore you don't drive a car, you shouldn't drive a car, and therefore we don't need parking. I think that may be problematic. I mean, we're already seeing in Old Town, there may be some assumptions about whether or not people who move next to a metro will get rid of their car, but we're seeing that that's not happening. There are people who have apartments and have cars and they're right on top of the metro and they're parking on the streets. So I, I do think that that's something for us to kind of think about holistically. And I know that we've had this conversation before about strategies for dealing with parking, on-street parking, some of the shortages and challenges that exist. And I think this, this particular, what we're talking about with the ADUs is just kind of getting folded into that.
Could I suggest one thing? I'm, I'm sorry, maybe one option would be to say not, if we say there should be no parking and then that becomes the county rule, we can't change it without getting them to change it. Maybe we could just say, we would like to be able to decide for ourselves how we do the parking. And then when we do our parking management study and some of these other things, we have control over it. So that maybe would end up here, but it would start here.
Is that possible to, because that was going to be the question I had, which is to give us the authority? Because I could see, in addition to that, again, going back to who you, other places like in Boulder, the city of Boulder, they actually waive parking requirements if you say for the next five, 10 years, I'm going to rent to, you know, below market or to a school teacher or something like that, so.
I think we have, I think we have flexibility. We could, you know, think about some language that we recommend for the county zone that says within municipalities, the municipality might be able to identify parking. I do want to note, and I included in the draft resolution some, some statistics, that approximately 14% of Tacoma Park households have no cars and 43% have only one vehicle. So we have, you know, a majority of our households have zero or only one vehicle. Now, that's, you know, when, the way that these things have been written in the past, and this goes with our commercial zoning and, and things, you know, it's, it's built for only. It's built, it's not built for a place that has the Tacoma Metro, the Tacoma Land and Transit Center. Tacoma Park is served by 18 bus routes. We've got seven bike-share stations, we've got walking, I mean, not every day's a good day like Ms. Kostick realized. But, you know, we really do have many people who do not need to own cars. There also have been some places where I've seen where, you know, you can just have an claim that you will not rent to somebody that has a car. You know, so, I mean, there's a variety of things. And it may be useful to see if there's some language that we can say that it's up to the municipality to determine.
Yeah, because I, I agree, I mean, I'm fine if, I mean, I would go for the no parking requirement suggested here. But I do think if the county goes to the two onsite parking, that's, that's too many.
Well, the, the two onsite parking rules out many of our, many of our homes.
There's a lot of waivers, yeah.
I think it's important to keep in mind that although, you know, the data here shows that 43% only have one vehicle, that means actually the majority of people in the community have at least one, maybe more. And how many driveways do people have? Like, I, I don't think the issue is car ownership as much as it is about having driveways. So if everyone in the commu, if everyone in the city of Tacoma Park had a driveway that could hold at least one, maybe two cars, this wouldn't be an issue. But I know for my ward, there are a number, and we're flatter than some other wards in terms of being able to accommodate driveways. Most homes don't have driveways. So even though the, you know, the majority have a limited number of cars, they're all on the street for the most part.
So, so what that does.
My colleagues of the number of people who have come here talking to us about the lack of parking and the need for parking.
Absolutely, and we saw that in the resident survey. I mean, that's part of, that's part of what comes out. I recognize parking is the sensitive issue of so many times. But I also know that by keeping the procedures as, as either the three onsite or the two onsite, we will not make a significant change for ADUs in Tacoma Park. So I'm happy to look into some good language about, you know, leave it up to the municipality. And that seems like a reasonable proposal.
If I may, I will say there's a lot of self-selection going on as to who chooses to live in these ADUs. For ADUs in Tacoma Park, I can only base it on my personal experience. I get people who want to live in the neighborhood because they can walk to the metro, so that's a choice. I've had folks say, huh, street's kind of tight for parking, maybe this isn't the place for me. So there, so, you know, we have to understand that the people, the tenants or potential tenants can actually make those decisions too, like this isn't going to work out where I am. But by and large, in Tacoma Park, you're getting people who want to live near the metro, at least in, in some of the wards. I don't know about all of them, but in some cases.
Great, Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you, my brain is sort of turned off, so I apologize if these don't make any sense. But I, I like the idea of trying to look at us being able to control the parking requirements, I think that's a good idea. I also had some concerns about whether or not it was likely to go through for there to be a elimination, an elimination of the off-site parking requirements at the county level. So that might help provide us with that opportunity, whether that moves forward or not. I had questions about the second point here in the resolved portion of the resolution, looking at bringing this out of the county permitting process and into the city. Is that something that would be language in the ZTA or is that something that would be determined outside of that process?
The, the, this would have to, I mean, it would have to go into the ZTA.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you know, the ZTA is only sending people through the county process. So if there's any way to step outside of the county process, it would need to have that exception written into it.
Okay, okay.
And so we, we took a stab at it. I opened the hearing, way, other ways of wording it, or if when we talk to the folks at the county, if they have a preference on that, taking their recommendations.
My other question was actually related to, I was looking at the language regarding parking and not to belabor the parking point, but it actually, I was a little confused about the section where it said, however, if a new driveway must be constructed for an accessory apartment, then two parking spaces, onsite parking spaces must be provided. And I know they're taking out the, if a new driveway must be constructed portion, but i- is there a requirement in some cases where a new driveway must be constructed? Or it's just saying if, if there's no way for you to have one onsite? I, I, that language was very confusing to me.
It was also very confusing to me. You are not alone with that. There, there are requirements, I believe county-wide about if you have a single-family home, you are supposed to have onsite parking as well. So I think, you know, in our neighborhoods, that's not the case. But I believe, because the way that's written is, it would be in addition to what is required for the home. So there's that. I also want to point out that when you do build a driveway, you remove probably one street parking space. So a driveway that accommodates one car is just a one-for-one swap. Right, so just keep that in mind too.
Yeah, and regarding parking, I mean, I think it's just, it's a tough situation. I, I definitely understand the, the situation where we have places where people just don't have enough parking. And, you know, they, there is a cramped, you know, and it's frustrating if you can't park next to your, next to your house. I totally understand that. Unfortunately, I, I have the opposite, I live in a place where I have to have a driveway because there is no on-street parking. But by the same token, I do think there is sort of a, you know, it's a supply and demand thing. If you, if you don't have parking spaces, then people who move in there, the, like you said, people are going to self-select. You're not going to move into a location where you don't have parking. So to some extent, I do think we need to think a little bit holistically and future-focused in terms of trying to get people out of their cars as well. I think that's pretty much what I have. I have a few sort of just general things I'd like to recommend in terms of language to be added, but nothing earth-shattering. So I can just follow up on those. Yeah. So, thank you very much.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, I, on a more general note, I, when I walked around during the campaign, this was something that a lot of people in Ward II brought up. That why is it so hard? Why can't I just do it? It would really help me with my mortgage. I've lived here a long time, my, my housing costs are going up and I can't afford to stay here. So that's, I, from my point of view, finding a way to do this is really, is really pretty important. The, the que, the question that you alluded to earlier about non-licensed, non-licensed units, have we gotten a lot of complaints over the years?
Very few.
Very few, okay, so even the non-licensed units don't seem to, because the, 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 one resident cautioned me about the, the possibility that this would spill over into too many people in there, too many cars or too much of a lot of things. And, and her experience living in another community, which didn't have such strict, strict inspection and, and licensing and enforcement requirements probably shaped that. But most people just are really pretty supportive of it. The parking is, is something we're going to have to talk some more about. But yeah.
Cool, great. I'll just say a couple of other things. I agree with the point Councilwoman Kostick made about parking. I know it's a, I know it's a tough issue, but I think, you know, earlier this evening, a few hours ago, we did pass a climate change emergency. And as we've talked about before, we've done some of the, a lot of the low-hanging fruit. What we're moving on to next are the things that are really tough. And if we're going to get serious in this community about fighting climate change and doing other things, we have to discourage cars and people being in cars as much. And so, as I said before, I can understand that some of my colleagues aren't there, but I would be willing to go for the no parking requirement within the one mile of public transit stations. In addition, some of the things that, we've talked about, a lot of the things I sent around, some of the letters in support of the ZTA from everyone from the League of Women Voters to the Commission on Aging, MHP, Sierra Club, Habitat for Humanity and Coalition for Smarter Growth. I thought they all wrote some very compelling reasons why to move in this direction. The other thing, I think that goes to some of the conversations we've been having lately about particularly thinking about Purple Line coming in and new development is, and this was in the Seattle Report, about how ADUs can be used as a tool for anti-displacement stabilizing of neighborhoods. And, you know, one of the things that we've seen in Ward III in a lot of places is people coming in tearing down modest homes to build larger homes. And ADUs are one way of people being able to, as Patty mentioned, have an extra income coming in or switch and downsize themselves and rent out the larger ones. So I just kind of wanted to mention that as well because it wasn't part of our conversation tonight, so, as a reason to do this.
So the county is, is, been having discussions on this and will continue. Because we don't have a March 27 council meeting, I, I urge you to take action if you want to do a resolution on this matter, to do it next week. And so, any of the recommendations in terms of language or whatever, please get in soon so that we can post it in time for voting, so, you know, have it posted for voting and for next week.
Great, and could we contact the folks at the county to see some of the language around the parking, just different options?
Yeah, we'll try, we'll, we'll test out some options on that.
Yeah, so that way we can get, because I know they're moving forward quickly and so.
Yep.
We want to do.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, so one of the things, when it, I mean, when, when it's before the county, they're going to keep changing. So we just. So we just have to keep monitoring and seeing what happens.
Right, I mean, that was one of the reasons we had the conversation. We were trying to time this conversation right, right in the sweet spot so that we weren't having the conversation so early on before the Fed Committee had, you know, were able to hear comments and everything, but that we were having it at a place where we were seeing some of the comments, seeing the direction of what was going on in the county. But we want to get in there so that some of our requests actually get into the ZTA. So I think we got the sweet spot, but let's hope. All right, we have one more item. I will turn it over to Councilmember Siemens for update on committee appointments.
Thank you for waking me up. The facade advisory board has a few changes in membership. Anne Fothergill and the two representatives from Historic Tacoma, that's Lorraine Pierceall and Jim DiLuigi, who are the representative and the alternate, are all, their terms are, are expiring. The city council has received a reappointment application from Anne Fothergill and a message from Diana Cohn, the president of Historic Tacoma, designating Lorraine Pierceall and Jim DiLuigi, again, with Lorraine being the representative from Historic Tacoma and Jim being the alternate. The council was in an opportunity to review them. Is there anybody, any objections to adding them, reappointing them? If not, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to our Housing and Economic Development Department. You all rocked tonight, thank you very much. This was awesome. And, yeah, it's eleven o'clock and so we're going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, have a nice evening.